Hey everyone, welcome to the May 24th, 2022 Portsmouth School Board Meeting. Before we begin, I guess we'll do that while we speak. I would just like to say that, before we begin, I'd like to say that I had the opportunity to attend the Sondheim on Sondheim Portsmouth School Board on Sunday. Did anybody get to see it? It was absolutely outstanding. I mean, I guys could go to Broadway after doing this performance. They were absolutely fantastic. And we have our, Nick, can you talk about your accomplishment recently with the Granite State Challenge?
Oh, yes. Well, the trivia team was able to actually win the New Hampshire Granite State Challenge Championship. So, yeah. So we actually, yeah, we have the big banner hanging in the front hallway of the school. We found it a little bit, but you know, it's still there. And actually, also this week for hidden to trivia is on what Friday, we're headed off to Atlanta to compete in the Quiz Bowl World Championships. So, yeah, more on that soon.
Well, come on, that's what I'm reporting next meeting about that.
I'm really excited about it.
Okay, congratulations. Yeah, congratulations. Okay, Steve, we do the roll call.
We do the roll call.
Okay, I don't need it.
Uh, Pip Clues?
Here.
Mr. Rapador?
Here.
Andrew Walker?
Here.
Margot Davity?
Here.
Nancy Kramer?
Here.
Hope Stan Hap?
Here.
Ryan French?
Here. On Zoom.
Is there a Zoom? Uh, Kipper McAvinci?
Here.
McDonald?
Welcome back. Okay, I'm gonna ask everybody to stream with a little allegiance, and I want us all to take a moment to honor the three members of those that were killed in the shooting in a Texas elementary school today. I didn't know about it until George just quieted and reviewed before I came, but apparently 14 students and one teacher were killed today in an elementary school. So please let's remember them and honor them. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all. I'm the deputy second of the May 10th regular meeting, little to approve. Okay, second, second. All in favor? Oh, yeah, I thought you were saying not.
Which I can't handle. Um, I believe it's under new business. There was a motion made by Lisa about a letter that we agreed to send to the House of Representatives and type on the, the motion included that we would also send that to the governor's office. I just wanted that to be included in the, we're bringing the motion if that is correct. If you remember right, okay.
We will make that correction. Okay, anything else? All those in favor? Uh, please, motion passes. Next, we have a public comment session. Do we have anyone here who would like to speak to the school board? Anyone on Zoom who would like to speak to the school board?
Yes, we do. Let's start with Lauren Cook. Go ahead, Lauren.
Hello, this is Lauren Cook. I live at 86 Coakley. I have a New Franklin student and two on the way. And I am also a pediatric neuropsychologist. So I'm asking to speak, to talk, to urge the board to move into more preventative, positive discipline strategies and away from more punitive or reactive strategies. And I'd like to really highlight two things that I frequently see in sort of southern New Hampshire schools. The first being that kids are losing recess when they're misbehaving. And the second being this sort of clip system where there's a public display of clips in front of the room and the kids' names are on these clothespins and they sort of move up and down based on their behaviors. And you know, there's two reasons why I feel like these are not appropriate for our kids. The first being that they actually don't really work. You know, when I talk to teachers in IEP meetings, they'll say things like, well, we need to do these because this will prevent Johnny or Suzie from acting out again. But the reality of the situation is the research doesn't support that. And you know, if you have a child that loses recess one time or goes down to red on one day and then three days later is faced with, they're struggling with their writing assignment or they're arguing with a peer, they're not gonna think, oh, wait, I don't want my clip to move to red now. I'm gonna stop, you know, this fit that I'm throwing. So first, it doesn't really work, even though, you know, I know teachers mean well and I think they think it works. And then second, we know that some of these have deleterious effects on our kids. They increase anxiety, they damage the relationship between the kids and the teachers. Other students, if, you know, I interviewed a lot of different kiddos and they'll immediately say like, oh, yeah, Johnny, he hangs out on red all the time. And he sort of gets identified as, as the problem. So I do want to say that I don't think that this is a pervasive practice across our Portsmouth schools. But I think there's a few holdout teachers that really believe these things work. And you know, I feel, I feel like they're challenging for our kids. So, so thanks. So if you'd consider that.
Thank you very much. We appreciate the comments. Okay, anyone else?
Our Zoom audience will raise their hand and speak to the board.
Okay, we'll move on. Uh, the next item on the agenda is the first special presentation at Elementary, Italian, not elementary school.
Yeah, so we have with us tonight Joseph Marquette, who is probably known as one of our world language teachers at the high school. In addition to being originally being hired as the Latin teacher, Joseph has started a number of programs and other experiences for students at the high school in person, language experiences. One of the more, most successful, I think, being Italian. And one of the conversations that we've had really is, is how else can we expand world language offerings? The board has talked for many years about how do we make inroads at the beginning for language at the elementary level. So through Joseph's help and a contact with the Italian Council's Boston, we've actually been able to have a partnership with the Italian government to, to fund this experience for students in our elementary schools. We look forward to continuing that partnership. We have currently an application back out with the Italian government to increase that partnership. And I think we're waiting to hear back formally on that. Hope we have an opportunity to contact next week. So I invited Joseph here just to speak to what this opportunity has done for us to this point. And so we're not necessarily, again, I think we said this at the outset with the program at the beginning of the year. We're not looking to say, you know, this is, you know, we have our complete vision of exactly what's gonna happen for all grade levels at the elementary level. We need to pursue and see where this relationship take off. And it would also be wise to reconstitute group to actually talk about elementary world language in preparation for your future budget cycles and what that might be. But there's been some amazing things going on. Joseph is much more animated in talking about it than I am. So I'm gonna invite him to the table to talk to you a little bit about what's going on in elementary schools.
Buddy? So immediately, I don't really know where to begin, except from this queue. I know that we're all on different pages. We have different ideas and want to know what's going on, perhaps you've heard things that are going on. But I'm here just to report quickly what we're seeing. So we are having a blast, an absolute blast. And more than simply having fun, there is some really interesting education going on right now in the elementary schools for a time. One of the most exciting things that we're starting to see, because we've been doing, this has been going on for a while now. And we are starting to see some genuine and, and excited, engaged cognition happening in their L2. Because of a lot of that having to do with how we're doing it as an approach. So we are taking a complete, what we call comprehensible input approach. So we use TPRS, so storytelling and physical response to story. So between immersion, comprehensible, which is comprehensible input is going to be immersion that is, that is sustained through messages that the students are able to receive. So it's not simply speaking at, it is bringing the messages that they can, that they can receive, understand, and then participate with. So it is a participatory, student-involved, student-engaged approach to really living the language for the time that we have together. And then uses questioning and sort of entering into the story to be able to prompt student response and induce cognition. So the important bit is that they're not doing a conjugation, they're not doing worksheets, they're not doing these things that perhaps we remember and perhaps we didn't always appreciate. But they're being asked to do this entered into an Italian moment, be part of the language, engage in the language, be transformed by the language, and grow through the language. So we're seeing this at all levels. The kindergartners are amazing, the first graders are fabulous, fit all the way up through the fifth grade. High levels of engagement, a lot of use of the language outside of the classroom. Actually, so the fifth graders were often a field today. In the middle of the day, I got a, an email from one of the fifth grade teachers. She's like, just so you know, our fifth graders are on the bus seeing how far they can count, they can count to up to a million at this point in Italian. And so they like to race, see what they can do. So they're doing this and that and that. In class, we stopped at about 145 because my not-so-young heart was like, okay, I can't keep this. But they're, they themselves are engaged. One of the things that I'm starting to pick up on as well is students dropping words that I have not taught the group yet. So, but I know that I've taught other groups, which is confirming what I was just hearing from the teacher, is that it's infiltrating the culture of what's going on and film their conversation. So that kids are coming up because they're into the stories. There's a theme and they're part of what's going on. And so the kids are talking outside about what they're here learning about in the story because kids know things about the stories that they haven't, you know, been introduced to, which they've yet to introduce before the class is beginning, which is only coming from outside conversation, which is a sign of investment on their part. So that's where we're at right now. We know that we have another teacher that the grant allowed us to bring on board. My understanding, she's doing an excellent job. And she was hired first and foremost because of her high level of Italian and her ability to bring fluent, near-native Italian to children every day without having to recourse to English, which is really important at this level. She also, as a person, brings a high level of inter, intrapersonal understanding to her, to her own world, but also to her classroom. Steve was gracious enough to set the time period where I was able to have her shadow and really be trained in what we're looking to see and how we're looking to do it. Plus, we need both weekly or bi-weekly, depending on what's going on, to go over curriculum and just help her just continue to grow as a language teacher, as a world language teacher, and really be able to shape our program. As Steve pointed out at the beginning, we're gonna do this, let's do it right. And so we're working very hard to make sure that it's not right. With that, if there are any questions, if there, whether it's, and there are others beyond this, there are other sort of fun victories we have working around the Italian program right now that are other benefits to how we can imagine this working into the culture of our schools and being transformative for the culture of the K-12 programs. Of course, what begins in K eventually ends up in 12. So as a whole, how can this impact and change the way we look at curriculum in the district? Because of course, anything like this that is so transformative as language is not going to merely be contained within, in our pocket. It's something that can move into the rest of their academic experience and thus sort of help us consider how we can get curricula moves differently or differently so that kids can take this and use it in a real-life, real space. So on that level, we can look at, if you have questions about community impact, what we're doing on that level. If it's about elementary language pedagogy, if you want to look at what sort of the humanistic qualities. So there are humanistic benefits to language learning at a young age, by which humanistic, we're gonna discuss things like other equity, senses of personhood, sense, perceptions of personhood on the outside, perceptions of personhood on the inside, things that are framed by that, which are part of neurologistics. We look at them and say, okay, is this something that language deeply impacts? On the other hand, there are academic ramifications for elementary language teaching. And we can also look at that, if anyone has any questions there. So there we go.
Let's all stop and go around this.
Um, well, first a comment. Mr. Markow was my seventh grade, uh, sign. I'm not gonna get killed old. So I think we pulled the little bit. Um, so I appreciate you being here tonight. And so I guess it was interesting that you said pockets and sort of spreading out the academics. But I guess I was wondering if there was, there are pockets within our elementary community that are engaging in this? Or is, is it every grade, every teacher, every school? I guess my son hasn't said anything to me and part of me wonders, do I need to be asking him about these things? So I guess maybe that's two questions. You know, are there pockets of kids that are doing this and it's not fully widespread right now? And second, you know, do we need to have some sort of communication campaign so the parents can start engaging their children and understand that this is actually happening?
Um, my understanding, I mean, in reality, for when we've worked with school schedules over the years, it is a lot to bring something new to the middle of the school year. So the grant came in the middle of the school year and was very generous on, on the behalf of the Italian government. We've worked together in the past. They were very happy to be able to work together again. But it did also come in the middle of the school year and there are established rhythms and much is not, we know that stability is really important. So Steve offered out just a choice packet to teachers to say, hey, would you like to engage? How can we engage? And, and really gave them a lot of control because it was, it was a shift to their schedule. And the three schools came at it in the same way and in different ways. Right now, I think almost every class at Dandero has Italian. I think there, I think there's a fourth grade because I'm not in those classrooms, I don't. But I think there's one fourth grade and maybe, maybe there's a third grade, maybe. But I think almost every class in Dandero has. And there are, there's, well, there's quite enough to keep immersive, this immersible. And I know as the teacher at New Franklin and at Little Harbor. And so she's working quite the schedules. So there are several sections, but it is not everyone. But for clarity, it's because this was the first rollout. And as we discussed what this could look like, I'm sure that we would want to see something where we're seeing that equitable, that equitable presentation and, and instruction at all levels. In reality, being the first rollout in the middle of the year, I think there's been a really strong engagement. And really, they started off a little bit, this is gonna be like, and they have, I will say that I know that the administrators have been enthusiastic. The teachers have really been enthusiastic. So everything is ripe for development. I think that's probably the most important thing to focus on.
Yeah, and I would echo Kudos to Joseph too, in the sense that we didn't know what level of athlete. I mean, teachers have been through a lot and the prosecutor saying, hey, take on something new. Wasn't, we knew whatever it was, wasn't gonna be immediately embraced in all likelihood, but we went around each staff, had some conversation, made it completely invitational to, if you want just a day, if you want a side-by-side for a unit, if you want every Thursday, you know, whatever that might look like and the, and the power of the flexibility there is to actually integrate in with content teachers are doing in their classroom. Because it wasn't like we were gonna recreate a schedule and say, we have another unified art, now we're gonna do Italian, you know, in this rotation. So Joseph's been embedding into classrooms, as well as Marissa, on their schedules, according to their terms, according to what their needs may be. And I think it's, I mean, when you talk about getting to scale, it's not, I mean, it's a great start to what can then become, again, if we can continue this relationship and expand it, a conversation about, okay, what is that? What is it gonna look like across all?
And is there significant training that required of the teacher in this, in these situations when they say we wanna do this? I know that there was, when we had spoke before, that there was a training program through UNH or something, or some sort of collaborative where some teachers were actually taking, I don't know if it was credentialing or classes for Italian, but is that a separate thing?
That is something, so for, I mean, it is, the broad picture is, it is specific certifications, the world language certification, there are multiple paths to certification in world language. But when, when we've discussed or talked about language in the past, that is one of the side benefits. So I reached out, I had one of our language teachers at the high school who's very dynamic, very highly skilled and interested in always doing more. We had talked about learning another language and bringing and going deeper on that level. And so that sort of planted the seed in my head. So I reached out to Idioma Consulting. So Idioma Consulting is a company that, that partners with Southern New Hampshire University, as well as the University of Colorado to create courses that are tailored to the needs of teachers. Of course, one of the things that teachers have is, as we want to, to move forward in our own education and continue our own training. It's that we're working from here to here and then there are children at home and this and whatnot. So a lot of the scheduling of, you know, that happened at that university doesn't always fit the reality of what can be done. So Idioma Consulting is something, is a company that has really moved to bring graduate-level education to teachers in world language and in world language pedagogy. And so I contacted them and I said, hey, you know, blah, 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 could we work together on developing a program for teachers so that not just accessing skills they have, but that they could learn Italian and then work towards certification Italian, then work towards deepening, deepening their knowledge? And they were really excited to begin that. So starting this year, starting with September, we did launch the program to teachers. This happened before the grant as well. And so we have our first cohort of teachers. Currently, we have nine teachers who are enrolled through the district. They're finishing their second level. The original program is a five-course program and from there it can go on. It can move in several different directions depending on where people would like to take it. The goal of the program is to bring people to proficiency in the four skills of language while also doing the check the boxes. I did take, having done, worked with New Hampshire for certification myself, I took the paperwork for the certification and developed the program so that it corresponds at a point to each of the requirements on certification. So that teachers who are doing this can also be working towards something practical for the school district where they could also become certified teachers of Italian. As they, you know, there's more that would come with that for certification, but have that, it would, it corresponds to the requirements of the state. So for, on that level, that is in place, yes. So something for our teachers to act as and have, it's in-house.
Okay, who's raising hands? Oh, who's raising hands? The next one's gonna be Pip. It's, we raise our hands. I called on Pip.
But it's not a question, it's a clarification for my notes, please.
No, we're gonna have Pip go first.
Okay, um, I wanted to say first of all that I, that I'm a huge advocate of language learning in general. And I think that I've come across as being not so much in these meetings because I was, I was concerned that we hadn't come up with a comprehensive approach when we started elementary language. But I want to say that I'm very, I'm reassured now hearing from you that this, the approach that you guys are taking sounds wonderful. And I'm just really glad that it's sort of come out organically and that it's already happening because I think that, well, I know we've been working on world language for a long time and it hasn't, we haven't done that comprehensive plan yet. But I'm excited that our kids are already getting exposure to language. So thank you. Thank you for just making that happen.
If I may, just for that, I mean, one of those things that can be lost, I guess, and perhaps because of the nature of the conversation, would be to put out there, so professionally, I have worked with K through 12 for most of my career until I returned to public education. New Hampshire does tend to compartmentalize. Are you in this school? Are you in this school? But for, for most of my career, I was in private education in Massachusetts, working in K through 12. So I have been teaching elementary education, middle school and high school for most of that, I bring that to it. And I do, I think my fourth certification will be done in language at the end of this year. And I have two more for which I'm pre-qualified. So I do bring a depth of knowledge in language and language acquisition in multiple languages and, and multi-angles to the table. So with that, I say that so that when I, we're working to use the, the first science, the freshest science, looking at brain science, saying, how does this language, how do we do language? What are the benefits of language? Doing our best to leave behind any of the old trappings of things that perhaps were used before a lot of the new understanding of brain science was established and, and really working towards communicative, a communicative functional language that kids will be able to become. When acquires a language, one lives through a language. Most of us had programs that taught us to talk about a language, which is very different than, and is a skill in and of itself and something valuable. But talking about a language is not the same thing as becoming a language. Having that language become a basis for cognition where you can live your life in here in that language. So when you see someone who actually can speak, actually can read, write, and listen to language, it's because they have thoughts in that language. And that is our biggest job, which is also why it is very important, if we really want this goal to work, that it be available to our elementary population. Because what we are trying to do, and I said, that's why I led in with that, that is what we want to see. It's when you look down at a little eight-year-old who's going, oh, Andy is responding in language without self-monitoring, without monitoring response, but is simply receiving a message, oh, we're talking about sports. And so there's lovely, one of the, today she turns around, she says, ma io faccio la ginnastica. I do gymnastics, because gymnastics is happening, the story. In that moment, she has like appropriation. She has a moment where this language has become a tool for her to communicate. And that, if we fostered it, eventually that one sentence becomes what we call a string of sentences, becomes paragraphs, and then just becomes locution. And then she just is able to open her mouth and speak. And that's the goal of a program. It's part of the 21st century educational model.
Lisa, oh, can you finish?
Um, yeah. Uh, I, well, I would just add that my other concern had been, well, why Italian? You know, because I think Spanish is so much more of a language in the United States. But one of the things I like about the Italian, I doubt I'm pretty, I can explain why. It doesn't really matter what language it is, but there are a lot of benefits for any language.
Yeah, you can go on.
One of the things that I like about it is that, that you probably have fewer Italian speakers in our own schools when you need Spanish speakers. And so I like that it's hopefully exposing additional things to my language. It may not begin in the second language. But I did, my, my question for you was, um, it sounds like it's just, it may be different for different classes, it sounds like, but how much exposure are the kids getting? Or how, how long are your lessons with them and how?
Right, currently, right now, I'm at Dandero. It is once a week per group. And the length does change appropriately for the age. So when one is with a group of six-year-olds, about the time you hit a half hour, it is time to do something new. And that's, that's completely developmentally appropriated. Whereas in the fourth and fifth grades, a 45-minute learning is something, as long, as long as the plans are there and the content's ready to flow and it's engaging, they're ready to go with it and they get, they have that stamina. And so the scheduling does reflect that, that basic sort of need, pedagogy move, that, that is part of planning a curriculum at all levels. But I'll speak very quickly to the Spanish thought. And by actually speaking first to the Italian thought. Lots of times, and I should say, so I've, I'm a fluent speaker of Spanish. I've spoken fluent Spanish since I was thirty-four years. So Spanish is part of my life. I, I love, I love being in Spain very much, actually. And whether it's Spanish music, Spanish literature, whether it's Mexico, whether it's even the art, Dear Helena. And whether it's Spanish music, Spanish literature, uh, whether it's Mexico, whether it's even the art, Dear Helena, I think, uh, to this. Uh, I'm currently teaching Spanish at a high school. And I, I've taught Spanish for most of my career, on and off, along with other languages. Spanish is a wonderful language. But if we turn to Italian and you say, what's going on with Italian? So there is, uh, when we talk about developing curriculum, we're, we're always thinking forward. And there's a catchphrase that we say a lot that, that sort of holds, it's sort of cliff notes to hold a lot of hopefully what we're all thinking about when we're looking at curriculum development. And I would say college and career ready. So college and career ready. So when this person goes to college, when this person goes to career, now, career with language is a sticky subject. The language that for your career that you want is the language that complements the career that you want to develop. So if you want to develop a career that prunes you frequently to Poland, then Polish is a very important language for you to learn. But what I find with, with, and I say this with absolute respect, but it is the reality of, of our country is that, that most people that I've encountered in this country so far are bilingual. When that happens, I find that a lot of people have ideas about the value within languages without necessarily always having experience of the value within those languages. When we look at Italian and we look at college ready, I just passed through the packet, is just look at the last page. So what makes for excellence in language is lived experience in language. Lived experience in language. So when we want our students and when we want to do it ourselves, because it's never too possible, that language learning is one of the best ways to put off um the dimensions of this world. So it is never too late, and they will never, they should learn Latin at 42. So just, just a thought and a side comment. But if you look at that last comment, that is from UNH today, and those are their, that these are reigning statistics for UNH, UNH as our flagship university, is a picture of the needs of the students of New Hampshire. But this is globally the trend, Italy being Italy. So I, we, you know, we know that we do trips. I was in, with one of our Spanish teachers in Italy in February. And about day two, she looked at me, she said, I get it. So Italy has been the center of culture for, but we were there in April, the day after its birthday. Italy is just over two thousand, well, Rome is just over 2,800 years old. And it has three major cultural movements where it was the center of power and of progress in the European sphere. With that, Italian is not just a language as education. Italian and Italy itself has been for, now into the thousands of years, a platform for education in our culture. So when we're looking at choosing a language, um, there's much to consider. So the language for a school district that we begin with, and, and I'd also like to point out, as a multilingual person who has both lived in France and in Quebec, and who does often go to Spain, there's not a language at this school that I don't cherish and that, and that I don't want to see flourish. And there are ways to make sure that all of this actually feeds and promotes multilingualism. But when we look towards a language, we're saying, we need to reach for a language that serves our future English majors, that serves our future history majors, that serves our future poly-sci majors, that serves our future business leaders, that serves our future. And we can just keep looking at all of these different, and there are languages that are a basis for education. And Italy as a country is strongly, strongly um one of the leading countries for education on this planet. So if you look at those statistics, they show that currently there are 138 students from UNH in Italy. The next country close to that is Australia with 87. So when you look across the top of that, you'll see that Italy outstrips every other country of destination for the students at UNH. And you'll notice that only Great Britain ever crosses into three digits, where Italy is always purely in three digits. So part of it too, when we talk about student choice, it might be hard to understand what a student wants to choose when she's eight. But when we look forward on what, so we say, what's gonna happen, where are they gonna go? So globally, this isn't just through English or through America. The two countries where people go are the UK. If you're learning English, it's here, and UK. If you're from here, it's the UK, and the first non-language country, non-English uh country throughout our entire 50 states is Italy. And it's because of the richness of culture within Italy. It brings us everything from history to poly-sci, to mythology, to literature, to architecture, to culinary exploits. Agritourism is one of the major world contenders in politics as well as in economics. So it's one of those things that I would argue that as a first language, it is going to bring up richness to our population. That is very strong.
So I would just, being back and add, um, one of the unique opportunities about Italian here, in addition to this merger partnership with the Dutch government, is globally, Italian is, is a part of the heritage, right? So we have a strong heritage of Italian culture already in force with, we have an established sisterhood. I never can pronounce it.
It's not that ganchering from my.
Thank you. And, and opportunity.
We can work on that. There's enrollment, I think this is another cohort.
But, but, you know, and we, we haven't yet really tapped into what that could. So I mean, I do think there's an opportunity for real community engagement for wherever this ends up going, but really.
Pip, are you finished? Lisa, do you have a question?
I do. Yep, I saw some part of it. I wanted to ask, there was something, I was looking back through my notes, I wanted to clarify what the plans are for the fall. And I'm curious, it sounded like the intention is to give all of the teachers in K five an opportunity to integrate Italian to their instruction, if that is something that they want to do, or is there a different plan as you're looking into the next school year? And I want to ask that, but.
Well, the plans, to be honest, they're, at this point, they're nascent and they are in administrator's minds. And there are, I'm certainly thinking about it, there are different ways to approach it. Uh, not to throw her under the bus, Kate Calhoun has come up with some really neat ideas and has some really strong ideas on how to promote this as well. That's a conversation to have. One of the things that is working very well, especially a bit with the younger years, is having it be embedded in the classroom with the teachers. When we think about the potential for more teachers to, um, and, and there's been a, a, so now becoming some interesting level of, of, of expressed interest for another, offering another cycle of the Italian for new people to try on in the fall. It is a, a fun way for us to start thinking about how we can bring diversity into our classrooms. So having it be embedded in the classroom is a very valuable tool, have the teacher learning along, you know, the, the, the classroom teacher learning along with the students, being present with the students. And then imagine ways where they can bring it into their classrooms. What it, if we hold to the science, what is necessary is that it be consistent and that it be constant. So, um, and we want to be very honest about what has caused failure in the past and uh not to model those same patterns. So having it be part of a, uh, say, uh, this block of time this year, and then they'll have it again next year, will guarantee failure. And then we will have the comments, which makes sense, this isn't working, why are we doing this? Okay, it needs to be constant, they need to have it all year long. So that is one thing. So as we look to how to do it. Uh, we talked before about stand-up. So there are, what's good for in the kindergarten isn't necessarily going to be what's good in the fifth grade. And, and we have a lot of experts in our schools who are able to help think that out and shape that. So we know that they all need contact, but that contact might be different. And it might be feasible to bring more to some levels and maybe at first maybe a little less is available. You know, there's so many ways to think that through. So trying to figure that out. What I do know, and this is what the research brings to us, but, and anyone is welcome to stop by to see. What we do is we want to have this for our K through, uh, our K through five. And it is important to think about the Ks and the ones and the twos. Piaget is someone who talks to us a lot about learning joy in learning and the opening of learning. And one of the things that he reminds us is after about 10 years old, and of course, things like this are going to change personal biologies and what have you. But at the end of the day, they do correspond also to notions, anthropological notions of formal culture. Is that our idea of othering people starts after about 10. When you start to think that you got the recipe down. And so it's really important to bring diversity and language diversity to children when they're very open to the idea that the world is a panoply and cranium box of possibility. And I can do this too. Okay, that's, so having that be, and what we're seeing on that level is everything, the research, if you look at the packet, I did sort of circle things and point them out. One of the things that we see with the younger children is, um, not only do they enter in, but because nobody, uh, we have a couple of Italian speakers. Outside of those couple of Italian speakers, um, Italian Americans, they sort of reflect my, my own experience to an extent, uh, how do you say, everyone is leveled on the plank too. So we receive our native tongue, our community tongue in different ways. And it depends on what's happening at home, how things are approached, how, what we're exposed to, what we're given. And all of that is the same in every country as the world. But when you are in school and you are brought in immersion, everybody is on the same level. And advantages, disadvantages, they all are brought to the same level. And that is really exciting. And so kids who perhaps didn't before, maybe in an English-based moment, couldn't or didn't feel that they can be leaders, are able to be leaders. It is also something that is really beautiful to see with our English language learners. Because we have children who do come with Spanish, with Portuguese, with Arabic, with Italian, with French, with Korean. And we know that bilingual or multilingual people do, at all ages, do learn languages more quickly than a bilingual person. And so kids who are often feeling that they're behind, that they're not quite can, that maybe I should sit and I should draw. Whatever, she used to hide, she comes right up, sits right beside me, and she says, well, in Portuguese we say this. And she throws it down because she has been taught that she has a valuable skill. And what she can, she can be a leader in the classroom. And in the same class, so first, uh, in a first grade scenario, a little, a, a, a young, young boy who speaks Spanish comes up, he comes up to me. And he whispers to me, just starts speaking to me in Spanish, and I'm speaking back to him in Spanish. And I said, and he's been a leader all day long, all, all lesson long, day long. So it's, it's all 25, 30 minutes long. And then he says, he says, this is just like the way I say it. And I said, yes, and I had Italian, I learned Spanish. Now you have Spanish, you're learning Italian. That moment is huge. He feels valued, he feels honored, he feels like he's a part, he feels like he's here. She feels like she can share, her voice is open, it is out, she's expressing herself, and she's showing kids herself. This in language and this in the classroom is one of those things that we really do want to put to the fore of our value system.
Good question, probably you would answer right at this moment, but as you know, we don't have Italian in the middle school. So I'm very curious, when you talk about brain science and language acquisition and all of these wonderful things, which I fully support. I'm just curious, what do we expect to happen during that three-year gap? And then what happens when they get to high school? Was our hope that they would then become Italian students at high school? Or what would be the right way to, I guess, keep that momentum?
There are multiple ways whereby we can look at that. I mean, obviously, I can, I can drop nebulous ideas too.
But no, no, very seriously, we don't teach it until high school, once they finish fifth grade, right now.
Well, hopefully, right now.
That doesn't mean it can't change. No, I understand, okay.
And it is something that we can think about, and we can, and it's, it's a change, it's a shift. The way, if, I don't know, it does, if, can you guide me to, to the middle school right now, and their UAs work on an AB basis? Is that was an AB day? Not?
Yes.
It's a rotating schedule, so that.
It's not an AB though, it's a five-day, it was six-day, it was six-day rotation.
It was a six-day rotation.
It's a six-day rotation. So, uh, hopefully, we have a chunk of fifth graders that would be ready to be part of a next experience next year. It would be nice to catch those kids, they have done real work and, um, and they're doing, it's, again, it can come, it's, it's a lot of fun. Having said that, uh, looking forward, what language could look like? Well, kids, I know that we sample in sixth grade and then they can choose right now Spanish or French, and that it meets within part of the six days. So my understanding is about 50% of the time. So, um, I see forward four paths. I'm sure that, and with good reason, and obviously, that the Italian government is going to, as they've there hoped us to, to partner with us in a meaningful way and keep contributing to our efforts to, to do this. And yes, they're going to want to see that in the middle school because otherwise it is, it is money lost and that's just real life. It is also, it is language lost. They will, it's called fossilization, it will fossilize and it will undermine the progress. So in a way, yes, we would have to commit towards moving toward middle school and the school program. What this could look like is, um, four potential paths for kids, especially working on this, on this model of rotation. There may be students who decide, and let's just deal with choice and not obligation. There may be students who, um, come up through, um, we could have an automatic enrollment into sixth grade Italian. Italian can work within that system, in that cycle. It would mean adjustments, um, but meaning, I think, is three of the six days or however, but they, they build it in. And have that continuity so that the kids coming up out of our elementary schools can be in Italian while still experiencing unified ours. At seventh grade, they may choose to stop doing language. This may not be their cup of tea. That is the way our system is set up, and we need to make sure for those choices. They may continue just for the time, say, Italian is not for me, I'd like to do other uh, other skill sets, other non-language based skill sets. I think that because, especially another advantage to Italian, Italian and French are twins, and Italian and Spanish are very, very similar sisters. So, um, students who have had a good Italian program will be able to, uh, would be able to also then shift into or choose to add Italian, excuse me, French or Spanish. So you could have a student who's doing three days of Italian and three days of French for the last two years of their school. And they would be well positioned to do that. And that would be following a Nordic model, which is really the global standard for how we do just about everything in schools, but certainly how we do languages. Starting one in K, so L2 in K, and then starting L3 at about seventh grade in a, in a language system that does expect children to be multilingual and, and, and to actually usefully educated in those languages. But then you could also see kids who just want to do one and they just want to do Spanish. And so they're going to end their Italian time and then opt for Spanish. And what they will have is they will be absolutely ready to chat, to dive in, and they will do an active, great job. It will be a major handout. So really four paths we can look forward to. It should be that they continue in sixth grade so that they have the continuity. And they get to seventh grade, they could opt out of language, they could just keep Italian. They could drop Italian and choose either Spanish or French, or they could keep Italian and choose one of the others. And so we have four paths, four possibilities of choice. And it should all work without causing too much disruption and negative impact scheduling affecting that as well. Because it does a lot to change the schedule.
Okay, um, let's try to unwind here, it's almost eight o'clock, we have a full agenda, so can we quickly ask a question?
I don't actually have a question because they've been answered very, very nicely. I'm very excited about all of this. And my colleagues have asked my questions, so they're well answered. Thank you.
I'm gonna just follow up, a lot of the questions were asked. My question is, um, well, how lucky for our kids to have this, but that I'm hearing it and wanting to know how soon, how soon would it take to get to scale on world language program? Because my, my angst is the, it's the equity issue that comes up of my teacher chose to partner and do it. And I've got this awesome language experience in first. But my neighbor was also in first grade, didn't choose to take it. And how that, so it'd be great to grow to scale to the point that every grade has it, how long? And how that, so it'd be great to grow to scale to the point that every grade has it, how long do you foresee that process and what additional costs? I know we've got the partnership, we don't know where that grant's going, but.
Um, so again, nothing can be, nothing I say isn't anyway binding or even totally as informed as it needs to be. Um, but uh with that and having conversations. Uh, in the middle, in the elementary school, it would take, you could do anything, really at the end of the day, you can bring in as much. You you you're not going to do longer chunks, they have the chunks that are appropriate to the age, but you could do it once a day or you can do it five times a week. You can, we can do what what we choose to do. Um, so you could end up looking at having one person per language in each school. But you also have the possibility to to come up with some pretty real plans where you're sharing instructors between schools. Um, really, uh, if if we can figure out, we need to be able to, the 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 elementary school can happen. Essentially, if depending on what our budget, what we're, what we're willing to um invest in. And to grab a bit of Shakespeare opportunity knocking. Um, elementary, the elementary schools can be full scale, whatever that plan becomes and what people want it to be and how we see that as as quickly as next year. The middle school will come in as a sixth grade, sixth, seventh, sixth, seventh, eighth. Um, and the high school is already doing quite well, so I'm in almost really, really strong on that level. Um, there will be, but we have, we have skilled administrators and we have skilled ideas of how to. There, there are moments where you're trying to balance personnel, it is important to to get good personnel in language. Um, which language is a critical shortage area, area, just by not having it be an emphasized part of our our national curriculum. We have fewer capable people, it's just the way of things. So um you have to go look for your teachers and you have to get good teachers. So um you're at once looking, it's a harder find. And they have to actually function to work with a system like this, they have to be able to open their minds and speak in time. Um, for that to happen, you will probably have to offer them benefits. Okay, you're, as I say, in other words, a full time position is if you're gonna ask them to move, if you're gonna ask them to be. So really, I think is that if we can find that that this is something that we'd like to do. Then the next stage is going to be getting the players around the table who are, who know all of the ins and outs that are necessary to build a strong program.
And 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 just to remind you, so the idea would be that rather than piecing together with part of Joseph, part of Marissa, we could actually. Combine the money from the Italian government with the money you've already put into budget perhaps. Add that full position, kind of fitted position, teaching contract position. That could then be fully utilized across the Baptistas for the elementary schools next year. We haven't even gone back to Joseph or he's been very helpful in spanning across high school, guys will be willing to share nicely. Um, but you know, we also have to look at opportunity for what his schedule would have, which will be good in the first step. So it's, it's, it will grow, it it won't grow to full, when you think about other um things we offer in the in the schools. You know, picture having one art teacher across all three elementary schools, you know, you're not gonna get the same level of scale, but it's, it's going to be a step further next year and then.
Will the government give the money every year, we don't seem to be confident.
I, it's always that is no matter what, the the shot in the dark, I know that they are, once I've shot the dark, that's the wrong. Um, it is always a question, it's always, but are they very committed and are they very excited, they are very committed and excited. So I began here with um grants years ago, I started my teaching career in this city um with a grant. And throughout the years, they have worked with me. Uh, uh, on on multiple occasions, both for funding, also for opportunities, so we have our sister city. We also already have a wonderful relationship um uh in Ostia, which just means Portsmouth in Latin. Uh, quite related, means all speaking the mouse, and so it's the port of ancient Rome. Um, where we've been going for multiple years and we were just there again. Um, they're happy, we're getting, we're hoping next year, if not yet, because of all of the COVID hoops and whatnots, we're hoping next year to be able to resume. Um, homestays again, right there in Ostia. Um, and that was, that that connection was made through the Italian consulate. And I know that the Italian consulate is, um, there's will be a new counselor general then to to celebrate our relationship and have it be rather formalized and special. So um if I make very quick, what I'm looking at for, um, we have several things that have, have we talked about? The program that is established for hopefully, um, as teachers decide to grow with Italian, we have this uh graduate opportunity. Um, we have the Italian partnerships with um San D'Arcangelo in Romania and with Ostia and with the Italian consulate. Um, not I mean to go into a big UNH, we just, I just delivered an N O U T U N H. Um, where we have established, I think that Portsmouth is the first, I'm, I'm pretty sure Portsmouth is the first tech city now. And New Hampshire have a direct relationship with the Durham campus of UNH for dual enrollment. So starting next year, Spanish five, French five, Italian future Italian five and Italian six. Um, each one will be at the entry, so intermediate, um, it's called five oh three and intermediate five oh four, which are the two beginning major courses. For Italian, French and Spanish by UNH and they have been gracious enough to offer for students for free. So on that level, we uh we, we are also beginning and the Italian department is very important. And and helping that come to pass. So between all of the work that Steve did, working with the Italian consulate to set this up. Um, and to get that grant going and who has also submitted paperwork for future grants. Looking at what we have for graduate educational PD opportunities for teachers, looking at after graduation. Um, those students on that list and hopefully helping to contribute to. Um, through the UNH possibilities, um, through our new relationship with them. I would say that yes, there's a lot to build on and I would say perhaps to unify us and to be self-aware, something to be excited about as well.
Oh, do you have a question?
I have a few questions, thank you, Joseph, for coming here tonight, I appreciate it, and I, you're always so humble of your experience. I love the language, just like you speak. Um, I I was curious, so right now we have a point five session, right? It's happening with your time, I don't know what time you're spending at Don Darrow's, but like. But that's not serving all classes, all levels in the elementary, so I'm just wondering how many students are engaged right now? Would you say overall in the elementary school and what would our participations need to be if we were going to? Maybe be more formalized next year or not just being opt-in?
If right now, so I'm not once a day, I'm every day at Don Darrow, so I teach block one and two. At Portsmouth and then I leave for, for at the high school and then I leave for Don Darrow. Um, right now, looking at it and um having spoken with one administrator, looking at that to get everybody. I think you'd be looking at a time and a half. If that is the goal, that that essentially is gonna take a half a contract per school. Um, to do a minimum of everyone is going to be, but that, there there are ideals and there are, there are, there are things that we have to be able to, does that make sense? So so we wouldn't, we wouldn't need more for that if that is the the goal.
No, in actual, we got it.
And then there's the question of how can we allocate and how can that happen?
Right.
Um, but if we wanted, if we wanted to see this equally available in all those schools. I think you're going to be looking at essentially half a contract per elementary school to do that.
Okay, I I asked for the same reason that one of kind of, we've had, you know, a lot of questions around equity and capabilities. And so I I know that would already be at the top of my mind, um, and then I was.
And I should say, I have received emails from parents asking that question, um, which is, which is clear and 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 it makes sense.
Sure, um, I also was curious, uh, the teachers that you mentioned that were currently enrolled in the five course program. I didn't catch the number of teachers, was that nine?
They're currently nine.
And if those are nine from our district?
Yes.
And so would they be available for um? Um, participation next year if we were looking to move things into the middle school or?
Um, in theory.
It's in theory of certification readiness or interest, I'm curious, or would we need to be looking outside of our district or?
Technically speaking, so. I think, so technically speaking, yes, um, they can get something called a letter of eligibility. At this point, they've had two, they've had two uh college, full credit college courses. So they can have something called a a letter of eligibility that launches a three year plan. And this program would satisfy any of what is, much of what is there on that plan. And then would probably require a a course or two, or at least some really good seminars, but a course or two in specifically language based, um, like language pedagogy. Um, having said that, you also, um, one full year, they're doing, they're doing quite well and they're having a lot of fun. We have one of, two of the teachers at this point have plans for actually going to study in Italy this summer. Um, another one of our teachers who's amazingly, um, our librarian at the high school, if you wanna look at somebody who serves Portsmouth or it's like her whole heart. So Heather Robb is actually, has made friends already, which is her way from Italy and they're coming out to spend time here. Uh, so we are already seeing exchange happening just on that level. Would anyone feel comfortable teaching might be another question. Um, uh, it would be a beautiful thing to see this come out of our district eventually. Um, whether they would feel comfortable um and want to do that. Um, depending on how my schedule can be, I need a, um, some sort of balance, I guess, on my own, in my own personal world. Uh, before uh it sort of pulls on my time, but it is my pleasure to do this. Um, uh, but I would very much be uh interested in and hoping to, as I'm doing with personnel. Is working with anybody who does um want to move forward as a teacher in the program, to make sure that we have curricular continuity. Make sure that the teachers have the support, it is scary to stand up in a new language and break the language. And to make sure that they have the support that they.
So my last question, I'm not sure, maybe it's for you or maybe it's for Steve or maybe it's for Zach, I'm not really sure, but um. You've mentioned a lot around. The kind of opting in at the elementaries and the KPIs are really great ideas for rolling out some things at Don Darrow or maybe. Throughout the elementary school programs, you mentioned some needs at KMS, so I'm just curious, like, where are the discussions with? Building heads and kind of the expectations for next year considering we're close to the end of the year and moving towards, or is that a roll over?
Yeah, it it's it's gonna be a carryover, um, we've learned about sources since, we've learned a lot from this experience, we've learned some great things that work. Both, uh, you know, from a language delivery model as well as how to integrate in the classrooms. Uh, and what hasn't happened yet is is a meeting with all three elementary schools to say, okay, what, what are some ways we could look at this into? Uh, next year, so the next steps would be to get that group together and to look specifically at, well, we will have a level which will, I assume, they'll assume from the Italian government. To say, you could deliver on this much staffing, now what will we do with it?
And has there been any initial conversations with Phil to catch those fifth graders coming up?
Initials conversation, yes, but that would be, it's a whole other scheduling conversation to say, and that's where, again. The Joseph on the spot, but he can't front himself everywhere, so where's the best strategic place to think about? Um, who's where, so, but yes, there's an initial conversation.
Anyone else, Brian, does Brian have a question?
Brian, if you wanna unmute, do you have any questions?
Uh, no, I think most of them have been been asked, so that's, I'm just listening in. But yeah, I I basically, you know, echo a lot of the things that I hear, I think, you know, I come from, you know, business background. And actually, one of the guys I work very closely with, um, you know, his primary language is Italian, but he also speaks French. And German and, you know, and it's just surprising how all, you know, many Europeans are just multilingual, bilingual. That's just not as common here. Um, but yeah, no, it's great to hear that this is, um, you know, the pilot, uh, sounds like in Don Darrow is. Um, working and my son personally has come home and said a few Italian words. Um, that's pretty, pretty cute and he's, you know, just trying to show off what he's learned and it's, and it's great to see.
Okay, Joseph, thank you for the, oh, Nick.
Yes, I, um, that's my question, but I didn't think, so, but I was just interested here because. I know what we're doing is pretty new, but I also know that what we're doing is pretty, is also fairly unique in New Hampshire. And so I was wondering what the procedure would be for kids who are transferring in during the school year? Because obviously they're not likely to have that experience going in with Italian, so what's the plan for kindergarten?
So that is actually one of this, and it's a very important, um, uh, question, uh, something that we've talked about right from the start. That's one of the places where you can get, if you're, if you're not thinking about it ahead of time, you can get kind of a hook. So right now, um, really, I I I've even working on it in the the high school, um, in my classes, is in the first level right now, everything is verbal. So there's no reading and there's no writing and that is important. The second you start to read and write, you start to establish level. So when things are oral and uh so we're just speaking and listening and prompting and listening. I can instantly turn to this student and I have the picture of Maria and so right now the kids can say, Maria, Maria, malata, Maria, alla febre, guarda la tibut. And the little kids can do this, now the new kid comes in, I can instantly just sit there and just say, hey, Maria. And we can just start with one word and those one words can become two words. We're not doing any grading that is important to maintain, that this maintain, that this be humanistically, that we assess it humanistically, not through grading. Because grading will bring shame, the immediate approach of effective shame is to bring silence and diversion of the eyes to things that will shut down any language learning experience. So it will also create strata, so right now, um, to your question, is up until, if we have this move into sixth grade. Um, conveniently, it was actually the superintendent of SAU fifty who hired me when I was much fresh out of college. So when we look at our schools who come out of SAU fifty, when we look at, when is the point, and I think the point is going to be seventh grade. Um, is at that point, we can start to be doing lots of reading and writing. But right now, it is just about constant communication, that way it can be tailored instantly to the needs of the person with whom you're speaking. And a new person who joins the group, um, can uh just jump in and do their best and the teacher just takes them under their wing, but there's no. This is the worksheet we're doing and I'm sitting here doing this, trying to tailor, the teacher panicking, trying to tailor new worksheets. How are you ever gonna do three years of worksheets after two years of worksheets and you cannot do it. That's why it does need to be oral, it does need to be fluent, it needs to be someone who feels that they can do that. However, it allows you to reach every student where they're at. Um, it also allows our kids to move inside of the city and change school and it won't really matter at all. So it takes care of the outside and the inside, I would agree.
Okay, Liz, I'm gonna ask you to answer a question because we really need to move on from what I passed stage. And can you, can we wrap it up with it though, because I think, so my question was, first, I wanted to make a comment that I think I transitioned, that I was in sixth or seventh grade in Italian and then I transitioned to Spanish. And so I'm glad you spoke to that because, um, I think Italian taught me more about the English language too, like prefixes and suffixes and in that Latin aspect of. Of Italian as well, um, and my, uh, important question is, are you guys ever gonna get your Italian trip? Your trip to Italy that was canceled because of COVID?
They are actually both now done, so I did need two groups um to that. And I'll close just with that, um, yes, Italian is modern Latin and everything that Latin does to promote literacy. Italian is also able to do to promote literacy. I know that we're constantly looking at tests and standardized testing, read the packet that I left you with, um, there's a lot to be said for language learning. When you do language learning this way, instead of being a linguistic measure, it is a problem solving measure. So math scores tend to jump, literacy tends to jump. You level the playing field between economic differentiators, you level the language field between language based differentiators. So this is the glaring element in the American school system that is absent. So as we talk about this, we look forward, I will leave it at that, the the it is a, it's a, is a good little piece just to look at, I did highlight it for you.
Thank you so much, cheers, wonderful to have you, but thank you very much.
Thank you guys. Cheers. Cheers.
Okay, I didn't even mention.
I didn't even mention, child.
Okay, the next, oh, we talked about reestablishing the world language within the past school overhead. Are you?
Yeah, so I, I think that again, um, in this transition, that's a conversation I would be having with Zach. Do you think that's something that should be established, but then, yeah, obviously it shouldn't.
Okay, okay, you can do that, we'll put it on the list of future candidates. Okay, moving right on, we have our elementary, this is kind of a discussion to happen, I see us three. Welcome room, so do you want to?
Yeah, no, they like to make a great entrance.
So I'm gonna back.
We welcome them, um, and uh, and they're here to uh talk to you, uh, just the general uh principles about disciplinary philosophies and practices at the elementary level. I know they're prepared to play, so I will present, welcome.
Thank you very much. So, um, for everyone at home, my name is Joanne Simons and I am the principal of New Franklin Elementary School. Beside me is.
I'm Kate Callahan from the Don Darrow School.
I'm Erin Lawson from the school in Little Harbor.
So thank you for this invitation to come in and talk to you. I have to say, you know, I know conversation this month from the boys around discipline. And I wanted to, we all were in agreement, we kind of don't use that focus. When we talk at the elementary schools, we really want to talk to you about our elementary systems of behavioral support. So while indeed there are certainly consequences tied to behaviors, it really is when we're talking about five to 10 year olds. A really different approach and a systemic approach. So Mr. Shea, if you could hit that first slide, thank you so much. So the first slide here you see is a very familiar image in education circles, that pyramid. And we approach a response to behaviors in the same way that we approach a response to instruction in three tiers. And so we're gonna go a little bit more into more detail there, but the tiers really feed into one another and they're fluid. So we'll talk a little bit about that tier one uh behavioral support system, which is to the benefit of all children. And it applies to all of our staff. Children who need a little bit more shift up to tier two. And then we have a small percentage of students that we would put at the very top of the pyramid, who really need a comprehensive support team around their behaviors. So it's really important to understand that it's not one stop shopping. That it really is, how are we supporting, giving students the tools, the strategies, the instruction around their behaviors, how to make really great choices? How the adults in the school, in our building, and that's all adults, who we're talking actually about. Um, Kate was mentioning her cafeteria staff and some of the training that they've had and the language that they used, her custodians, her paraprofessionals. It's the front office that everyone uses a language, is consistent in support and that students look at, at all the adults' resources to support their behavior. So we want to uh just kind of walk you through it, so Mr. Shea's gonna take us to that next slide, which is to the tier one. So tier one, which is the bottom of the pyramid, is for all of our students. So when we look at tier one, we're talking about our social emotional curriculum and that certainly has been a hot topic. But not one that's a new topic to us, one that we've known is so, so important for all of our students. It's that conversation around instructing students around how to navigate their behaviors. It's around providing them with strategies to self-regulate, um, those tools and, and tips and tricks that we give them to problem solve. With their friends, with their peers. What we also talk about at the tier one is really clear expectations. So each building may have slightly different expectations, but in each building, we've worked really hard to identify. Clear expectations around behavior. At New Franklin, we call those the gold standard um expectations. We actually utilize a, a grid of sorts with our students where they're going for the goals. Um, and so we talk about that and I know that the other two days have somewhat similar systems where we're just really explicit. Around what it means to be a New Franklin, Don Darrow or Little Harbor student. So that's so, so important because they need to know what's expected of them and we, and we instruct and we teach um those expectations. So we oftentimes will be problem solving with our students within our open circle curriculum, SCL curriculum, which we're using right now. There is a whole, um, there's a whole toolkit and strategies to design around problem solving where students stalk and they think. And they explain their feelings and talk about strategies around that, what's done with our guidance team, your classroom teacher, with your principal. Another huge piece of this tier one is around growth mindset. And this has been such an important part across all of our buildings. That idea of helping students to really think about the world around them as an opportunity to persevere. To work hard, to process through, to be flexible in their thinking. You know, that can be hard, whether that you're five years old or 55 years old, but that idea of rounds, flexible thinking and optimism. Uh, we do that through a lot of positive self-talk. We use strategies, like some students will have, you know, prompts on their desk for positive self-talk with some of our littles. We've used everything from mirrors where kids go and give themselves an affirmation each day. Because that's really a part of our behavioral system, how we're giving kids the, we're building on that mindset. To be positive members of their school community. And a huge piece, I know for all of us too, in talking about what our expectations are, talking about the celebration of our learning. Is those celebrations around behavior. So how are we acknowledging when things are going really well? And I know we do things like positive phone calls home, we have positive uh postcards that are mailed out. We are, um, again, individual buildings do it differently, also just speaking about New Franklin. We give kids gold tickets for those gold standard behaviors and we, every Friday, we draw the names of five students. Um, from our gold ticket box to celebrate and acknowledge the great behavior that we have. But those are all parts of that tier one system that impacts every single child. And sometimes there are students that have behaviors or are really just trying to navigate those social constructs. And sometimes we'll move them up to tier two with a little bit of extra and Kate's gonna talk about that. Oh, I'm sorry, Erin, Erin's gonna talk about that.
So we're just thinking about these tiers, um, we're thinking about not only kind of looping up the tiers in terms of what students need. But also how many people are involved. So as Joanne mentioned, these are definitely multi-tiered systems of support, thinking about who those support people are. So typically at the, at the first tier, that really is classroom teacher, it might be some guidance instruction, but it's something that's available to everybody. When we're thinking about these kids who really need tier two interventions, we're talking about about 10 to 15% of the population. Some of these kids are going to be consistent tier two children who need specific teams or need specific plans around them for the school year. And other students are going to have periods of time where maybe these things pop up. So when we're talking about tier two students or, or students that are in need of that support. We're really thinking about what are those goals or expectations. One of the things that we talk about is what are the lagging skills that a student needs to learn? So in that same way that we intervene in academics, we're thinking about that with behavior. Is a student having a hard time playing carefully? Is a student having a hard time um kind of flexing their thinking to see another person's perspective? And really trying to make sure that we are not just addressing the behavior that we're seeing, but also filling that gap. What is that need that the student has? So thinking about that referral might be for specific guidance interventions or groups. Um, so it might be a social group that's targeted towards a specific skill. It might be setting up some goal setting with the guidance counselor and the parent and the, the teacher. To be able to say, this is something that we're really gonna focus on and be able to kind of work towards. So involving the student at this level is really important. Um, anytime a student is struggling with behavior, behavior is communication, it's telling us something about that student and what they need. So we need to be able to figure out how to address that need, not just the problem. So thinking about how we're going to do that and bringing in often more supports. So that's where it might be thinking about who a mentor um could be within the school. Might be connecting that person uh with another adult that they feel comfortable with to bring into that team. Often it's gonna be guidance, um, but sometimes there's a student who we may say, this is a student who really loves art. How can we bring the art teacher into this experience to be able to reinforce that? Um, at Little Harbor, we do have a specific check-in and check-out program that sometimes we will set kids up with. So kids who are in that need of another fucker, another adult in the building to have that daily check-in with. Um, and that's done kind of informally for some kids and very formally for others. Um, it's also thinking about how we look at the data that we collect. So all three of us, we're, we're talking about the idea that um when we see behaviors that are coming up, we need to look at that as information. So what's happening across the grade level, are we seeing a particular need arise at recess in third grade? And maybe we've got to have a plan for how we're gonna approach third grade recess, or meet those teachers to be able to problem solve. Maybe four squared, fourth grade is a really big issue, I'll tell you it is. Um, and so reviewing those expectations, bringing in maybe the gym teacher to review rules, setting up some ways to do that. So sometimes when we're looking at that data, it gives us information into what we need to do. That might become a universal support, it might become something that we need to address with a larger group of students. And sometimes it gives us information about how behaviors are changing or trending for a particular student. Um, at tier two, it's also important to note that we have a higher level of collaboration with family. Um, that certainly at the elementary level, parents need to be partners with us, so we work hard at that. But I think that if the tier one, that's kind of looked at as the, the classroom teacher primarily is that contact. And at tier two, oftentimes that's when we need to, to connect the parent to those other people that the student may be having interaction with. So connecting the teacher with the guidance counselor, connecting that teacher with one of us. Um, so that we are starting to build that network of support as opposed to just that connection or that expectation around classroom behavior. Um, and students, again, where those documented needs are not being met through that, may need more. They may need tier three instruction, and so Kate's gonna talk a little bit about what that part is like. Well, if you look at tier three, um, this is a top of the year where there's already three students, I wouldn't say they're a lot less than, it's a tier one. And most of these students are already working with a system of people. And so that might include what Erin just described as, it was the counselors, the principals, a mentor, a mentee. Um, another big, I think, factor into this would be some of our specialized teams, um, and also our B C B A. And so there is usually at this level, um, a very clear behavior plan in place. So those expectations for what the expected behavior should look like, as well as the consequences are already mapped out. And that's mapped out not only for the internal um team, but also for the external team. So that if a parent needs to be notified of a behavior, they've already seen the agreement that we have in place. Um, for those, those levels of support. Um, there's intensive level of instruction and that might mean a co-treatment. So it might be the counselor working with a speech path and so that we're teaching the skills and counseling, but we're applying that. In a speech, with a speech and language of pathology, or you're working with a case manager and a teacher. Again, going in and working in partnership um to make sure that strategies are implemented, but also supports for the unwanted behavior that we are seeing. Um, behavior plans are monitored, they're tracked like Erin had described, um, it gives us insight into what is working, what do we, what do we as adults do differently? What do we keep the same? They're really looking at it from a two week standpoint, or are we looking at it from, things are working in a classroom, but they're not working at lunch? Or they're working in the lunchroom, but they're not working at recess. Um, so again, that data really helps us inform our decision-making process. But it also uh lets us track some of the information with the B C B A to also make adjustments to how our work. Um, counseling is a huge focus, I think, that also, when I think about the kids at Don Darrow, we have the counseling through psycho mental health. Um, that most of those kids are, are working with at a different capacity. And so, um, for us, our nurse Sarah has been a huge part of that piece. And so what I'm realizing is in the counseling session, some of those tough conversations are happening. But then the nurse has become their go-to as mentor and their safe person, and so those conversations continue to happen. Um, the coping studies are very lacking, Mike. And then, like I said, the outside providers, it's finding that balance between what we do in-house and then how do we support them outside of school? And I think a big piece of this is parental engagement and helping them understand. These are systems within a six and a half hour day, we know that when they leave school, it's going to look very different. Um, partnering with housing has been a huge success for us at Don Darrow of extending the work that we do internally to their after-school program. And showing them, okay, this is what this student needs, um. And kind of coming full circle, and I would say when a parent is not as ready to engage in this process. There's enough data that we've collected that we can still show the growth and show the areas that we need to continue to work on. Um, and I really look at it as like Erin and Joanne both said, the behavior is telling something. So how do we get deeper to do better or right by the student? So as we move into collecting data and why?
Yeah, this is absolutely a, a summary, um, you keep hearing that the three of us kind of mentioned the work data, it's so important. As I, as I mentioned, this parallels, it's a parallel track to our instruction. Um, we're always collecting de- data to inform our instructional practice and we do the same as well around behaviors. So we each, within our buildings, have talked about and defined what we might refer to as major and minor behaviors. Those, we also refer to them as dangerous and destructive behaviors for um some of those major behaviors. And so when we defined it, now we can collect the data around it. And we do that through our different behavioral systems, our reports that we have and we use that. And we share that with our teacher teams, we look at that with our supports, our guidance, our special ed. Education departments, Kate referenced our B, our B C B A. All of those people, we look at those various, those various tiers of, of data, our building-wide data, might be student-specific data. And we use that to make improvements and to refine the instruction and supports that we need to, um, to give to our, to our students.
I think the other piece, just to piggyback that isn't out here, um, some of this data is also used to, as a collection, only think of placement. And so we, as, as the outsider may say, oh, you know, Erin and Joanne are really great from an academic perspective. But from a behavior standpoint, when you start to track some of those incidences of where those behaviors are coming from. It's easier to say, okay, you know, we just need to break them, they've been together for two years, give a separation in class. So they can see each other at recess, it's a part of that, but maybe that's also something to do differently. Or even I think sometimes when I engage with the families of, you know, there's constantly having the same playdates with the same student. All those, those behaviors at home now are coming into the school. So how do we help from a friendship standpoint, make some, some decisions around friends? Um, I think a big piece, like Joanne said, is reflecting upon systems within. And so what as the adults need to do to change from our system so we can better meet um the needs that are, for the behaviors or behaviors. Of course, there's a great example of, well, well, for us, it's one of those pieces that we've had to reteach um. And model and use the language and how do we engage when you're frustrated? What behavior do we display if we're man out? Feeling that you're always being, you know, man out, um, how do we use strategies and have conversations to help a student make it theirs for their own sake? To piggyback on that, I think the other piece of that is when we're thinking about students, we know that we're dealing with elementary school students, right? And so we also know that sometimes the expectations at a playdate are different than an expectation at recess. Um, you know, one of the conversations I find myself having about soccer is that there's a time for tackle soccer. And it's not recess, you know, um, we're thinking about what actually tag looks like. Might be different when you're playing in your neighborhood than when you're playing at recess. And so helping kids to navigate those social parameters of where you are and what the expectations are. Really is something that I think starts with that tier one instruction. And some kids, that's on, and they understand, I don't talk that way when my mom's standing with me, even if I might talk that way to my friend. Or, you know, things that you might do, you wouldn't do in class, but you would do someplace else. And it doesn't mean it's inappropriate someplace else, it means it's not appropriate in class. So helping kids to navigate that, I think, is one of our biggest jobs as elementary school educators, that we have to think about time and place. And so something that is funny at recess, it's not honey in math class. Um, and, you know, really thinking about that. And so having those conversations with kids, so that the conversation is certainly about the behavior, but also about the teaching. And I think that that's the piece that, that is really important um to us is, as people dealing with these things. Is that I never want a student to walk out of my office feeling like it's, that, that this is going to define them. The opportunity is there for you to take responsibility for what happened, to understand what happened so that you can learn from that. And that we're here to support you so that you can make better decisions in the future. So I think that all of that comes into kind of our philosophy of what we're doing and why. and why we're talking about the supports and systems that are in place as opposed to about just that four-square incident.
Well, thank you. That was very interesting. Okay, I guess we'll open it up for questions. Why don't we start on the side this time?
It is a pretty quick clarifying point. So you talked about like tier one, fifty, tier three. So I assume like tier two is subject to the like treatment of tier one, but do tier two and tier three directly overlap normally? Or are they like distinctly separate?
Because they're fluid, Nick, and I'm saying that it's not that you're necessarily in a tier. It's what do you need in that moment? And so tier one is kind of a little bit separate because it's something that's available for everybody. But tier two and tier three might depend on what it is we're talking about in that moment or what situation is going on at that time. There are students, certainly, who fit more thinly in one or the other, but there is a overlap, to your point.
And I think our tier two, it's more short-term. And so we're putting systems in place to overcome that. Right? My tier-three kids or my tier-two kids for an extended period of time. And so I think that's where the multifaceted team comes into place. And that it's not something that we're going to look at from a two-week, three-week period. It seems to be a pattern of behavior that we're multiple people coming together to try.
Kate, do you have a question?
Yeah, I have a couple of questions. Okay, so I think you already answered one of them. So when you're in these tiers, so you're in tier one, that's in the classroom, something goes wrong, you handle it as a community event or a way to work around it. But the way it was presented, you go to tier two, and then, you know, you could end up in tier three. So I guess my question was, we may not know the answer, how do you know the interventions that you're doing, say, at tier two or tier three, can migrate that student back to tier one? Is that possible, or do they end up with a B C B A? Or like, what's your research on that? Not research, but your... What do you see? No, so great question. So what I would say is, think of, maybe there's a girl group issue. Maybe we've been noticing that some of the girls have not been kind in fifth grade at recess. And then our kids are great, they're great, by the way. But what I would say is if we see that, that we may start pulling, you know, a small group together with one of our guidance counselors. And they might have a group for, say, you know, four weeks, four or six weeks. We, you know, try to give them better strategies to navigate, to navigate friendships. And so then that group may end. And the guidance counselor is always available for them to check in. But it's like, let's take that and now, you know, go forth, go back. And we usually see some really nice things around that. You know, just sometimes people might need a smaller group and more intensive instruction around a particular behavior. So, you know, they're not, when you're in tier two, you're not always in tier two. It's kind of a short-term quick fix, we hope. And then, you know, you're back within the tiers. And the tiers are for us. Like, a child is not defined by their tier. They don't know I'm tier two or three or one. They have no idea around that. But for us as a system, we think, we have to have a solid base on our pyramid. That tier one, we need to make sure, just like we do with our instructional practice, that we're clear, that we have defined what we need to do, defined our expectations around behavior, just like we define our instructional standards, that we're teaching explicitly, which we do through our various S E L lessons, through Open Circle. So that's like tier one, everybody's going to get that. Then we might see something.
Teachers are just, it's best practice, it's what they're currently doing in the classroom. And so many times, we don't even hear about it. It's when, okay, I've done all these things, and now I need to put the help. Like, who can I reach out to to say, put all of these systems in place? But Joanne's still not understanding that, and then it kind of goes to that counter. And I think that tier three becomes, okay, we have this team, and now it's, okay, Kate, you really need some help. You're tracking the system, the behavior is not changing. Sometimes it's getting worse, sometimes it's bringing somebody else in. And now how do we come together as a larger team and say, okay, like, the behavior is telling us something, what do we need to do, how do we execute, and then how do we track that?
So there's mobility. And then the other piece, Erin, you had some great things to say in our meeting the other day on restorative justice, and you presented it very nicely, so no worries.
Well, thank you, but I hope I can come up with a hand.
Yeah, so the aspects of when something was done to the community, how you treated it. And I thought it was really nice, so I'd like to expand a few more.
Yeah, so just in terms of problem-solving with kids, and we had been having this conversation about how do we repair things when something goes wrong. Certainly, there are situations where you might know that students make mistakes, and they might make a poor choice. And like I said, we don't want that to define students. How do we help them be able to figure out how to make that right? And so we've been talking about the idea of kind of how do you repair that? And so one of the conversations that I often have with students is, when something bad happens in our world or happens in our community, that is our fault. We kind of had a part of taking responsibility is thinking about how you make amends. And amends sometimes are simple, and that's about saying sorry. But it's also about putting good back into our community. So if we've harmed our community in some way, how can we make sure that we're putting some good back into that? And so really working with students to be able to have them be a part of the problem-solving process. And so I was telling these guys, four-square in fourth grade has been a number of conversations for us. And so one of the things in that conversation with this group of kids that were really having a hard time with this, and it was causing other issues that were carrying over into the classroom, where they said, how do we make this right, you guys? Like, what are we going to do about this? And their idea was that they were going to make a slideshow of directions so that everybody played by the same rules. Because if we all agree on the rules, then maybe we won't fight over the rules. Great idea. So how can we make this right becomes something that is how do we put that good back into the community? We're doing something that serves others while also taking responsibility for our behavior. And so it is that idea of how do we restore things and restore balance with our community. And like I said, I probably said it better the first time.
Maybe that was even better this time.
No, I had a few questions. One, I just, I'm curious to hear more about the data that you guys keep talking about, like how that's collected, what are trends are you seeing? Or just what is your data really telling you about?
So years ago, we had a behavior, what we call behavior forms. And so that was simply a house. And what we realized is that, so if you sort of see patterns of behavior, we weren't able to communicate with them. So we switched it to call the communication form. So if I was the one who was making a poor choice and needed to be redirected, then there's an area where the incident is described, and then what strategies you put, what conversation looks like. And then that would go to the classroom teacher, the guidance counselor, to me and to the parent. And sometimes there's a stop where the student, there's a lot of reflection where they would have to write, or Erin was like, how do we want to make this right? So we had a student, for example, pour milk all over the table. So his decision was, I'm going out, Mr. O'Neal, he's like, wasted his time acting to clean up when I was frustrated at someone's house and poured milk all over the table. And so that is stapled together. All of that data is collected each, I'd say, every six to eight weeks. This is a chance in the school council, I will look through that, organize it. Is it the same student or the patterns, is it the same time of the day that this is happening? Do we need to do a better job of putting some systems into place? Sometimes that may lead to that tier, okay, this is not the system, so we need to get more support. And it's this ongoing conversation. So when we send out students off to middle school, I can say to them, hey, these are some of the behaviors that Steve and I have sat in on and had conversations. And here's what worked, and here's what didn't work. Here's what you might need to know about, you know, how to respond. Like, my whole thing is every day, we have to start, we're going to hit restart buttons. We made a difficult time today, respectfully, respectfully, usually, but tomorrow's a new day. And so that's been super helpful to have those connections. Through Google now, I can communicate with those kids. And so for me, it's been helpful for them to say, okay, Kate, like, can you just send your message? Just check in, and then it becomes an ongoing piece. I think as you see some of those trends, are those trends just, is it, you know, is it just a square? Or is it just a group of kids, it's a cohort, or it's just something that we really need to be mindful that we're seeing a pattern in elementary school, social media, fourth and fifth grade, and how that has continued? And then we can, I can have conversations about this, how we've engaged parents, this is what we've done, I think we need. That was kind of what I had one year, we brought Ica into elementary just because so many parents, I need help, I don't know how to navigate group texts, I don't know how to do this. And I was able to look at our behavior communication forms and what was coming into the school and saying, here's your beginning to teach and help us, and really bring outside interest to help me and to help teachers and help families.
So you're each collecting data differently? So we don't have data that's a district on what those patterns of fourth grade, or we really have them as fourth graders and Don Dara?
I think it's the same data, it's just not the same tool. So I might, I don't use Google Forms, they might use Google Forms. I'll use a place like this, but it is totally my old school place.
Okay, so you're collecting the same information for us or something? And then I'm curious if you can talk a little bit more about, like, I really appreciate if you could lay out the tiers. So I'm curious to hear a little more about how that plays out day-to-day in the moment. I grew up in a classroom in Wiltshire, you know, just remembering my kids. But even beyond that, I have tons of these, and then you have friends that have kids in our district. I know there's, there used to be star charts, sliding charts, you mentioned the golden tickets. I have mixed feelings, I'll be honest about that. Because I do think in today's world versus my kids' elementary school generation, there's a little more around labeling kids. Kids are very much more observational sometimes about, you know, who's getting the golden tickets all the time and who's not. And they're just more keen, I mean, I'll use an elementary school girl as an example that was telling me about her friend and said, she's my friend sometimes and sometimes she's not because we have to, you know, put our chairs together and clean up. And she always reminds me that I'm second, and I'm not fast enough, and I'm not as good as she is, and I don't get the same awards that she gets in class. So I mean, I do think kids recognize things like that. So I just wonder how you're defining positive behavior and if you're taking into consideration kids' limitations. Some kids are more organized than others, some kids understand English better, some kids have better time management. And, you know, if we're defining it by things that may be limiting to some kids or if we're defining it by respect, or I'm just curious how, how are you defining positive behavior that kids are expected to, the standards are being set on?
Yep, so I'll give you a little bit of what we do within our building. And again, I know it's very much a line that, but we have basically followed a modified, what we call a P V I S system, a Positive Behavioral Intervention System, which is research-based. And a huge piece of that is around the celebrations of behavior. So I mentioned to you our gold standard behavior at New Franklin, and we talk about giving respect, obeying safety rules, leading by example, and demonstrating responsibility. And so we flood all of our students with opportunities, just constantly flooding them with, I really love what, you know, what a great job that you're doing here. Whether it's walking through the hallway, whether it's just being a kind friend, whether it's, you know, making sure that, you know, outside of play, that maybe you let somebody go in front of you. And so it's just flooded. So there are thousands and thousands and thousands of tickets that are in a box. So we are not a district that has clip charts or highlights, you know, red, green behaviors for kids. We are a district that celebrates when we see children really being respectful and kind to each other. And so that is just something that we all want to highlight, and we do it in just various different ways.
I think the key language is expected behaviors. I think we all have, it's, this is expected. It's like you're expected to be kind, you're expected to be respectful. There's an expectation for walking the halls on the right-hand side and staying in a street line. And so getting caught, so to say, doing that and acknowledging that is just as powerful as getting the ticket. And so I came into Don Dara where responsive classroom was a huge piece, so it was much more intrinsically motivated. And for my own background, kind of from modest grade, it was intrinsic. But none of a kid can do, not even my own kid, isn't intrinsically motivated. So finding that balance of acknowledging what they're doing right is really embedded in our everyday practices. Like, there was that whole push your chair, and it's a cause of need to go to lunch. Mrs. Keller has this little minion, you know, as a collective unit. They, you know, had five rules they had to follow that she then passes around through the school. So it's much more around what we want to see rather than what we don't want to see. And how we address that is just really embedded in our everyday practices. Lunch, recess, after, student leadership, our assemblies. And sometimes we have to put more effort into aspects of the day to make sure the expected behaviors are exactly what we want them to. I think the other piece of your question that I'm kind of inferring hope is is really what about those students who aren't feeling successful with that? And I think that that is where we would consider those kids to be maybe tier two or tier three. And if some of those kids do have very distinct behavior plans, what they're working on. So if a student is having a really hard time with peer interactions, and we want to work on kind words, safe body. And I might say, you got to put one more thing on there that you're already doing eighty percent. That's always my rule with being your plan, because you've got to be able to earn something every single time. So if you're working on those three things and you're getting feedback on that on a regular basis, then our goal still is to reward the positive. So it's not, you're not being kind, it's, I love that you were, oh my gosh, you problem solved that with your friend, you were frustrated, and you were able to use kind words. I'm so proud of you. And so there are students who are working on that in a different kind of way. But we try to do that in a positive way, and we try to do it in a very specific way. It's also not, you can't work on everything at one time, right? And so there are students who are having a hard time with several things. And we need to hone in and be able to say, what is that targeted, specific goal that we're going to teach, that we're going to reinforce, and that we're going to model? And so how are we going to do that? And that's where some of those systems of support might be in part. That might be a paraprofessional that's with that student at recess, really reinforcing exactly what it is. It might be a student who's having a hard time at the lunchroom, you know, staying in their seat and using the safe body, and they're up and they're ramming into each other. And so that's a plan with the person in the cafeteria to say, every time he comes in, I want you to remind him what the rules are. And then the first time he does it, I want you to catch him doing it. So that you can say, oh my gosh, you remembered, I told you you were going to stay in your seat today. Look at you, you're right here, you're not ramming into people, you're respecting personal space. So that really we're reinforcing that. And I think that that's that piece where what we're doing is trying to recognize that growth piece of things and really recognize kids working on what they need at that point in time.
I appreciate that clarification.
I'll pass them up. Okay, got it. I have several. Thank you always. Mine is, in collecting a lot, looking through the email support has gotten over the year. We continue to get, the concern is that we have a board policy of recess can't be taken away for behavior. And we continue to get the feedback that it is being taken away. So I would like to just get some clarity on where's the disconnect happening so that we as a board can better communicate our policies out and change our handbooks and how it goes out. So that's my first question.
Sure, so I, we judge the parents who send emails to the board. I would guess I was a little bit surprised. And so my understanding was that feedback was solicited from members of the board to say, tell me what isn't working. And so one parent, I'm sure that there was a substitute teacher last year who at the time didn't really understand the outdoor ed piece. And so she was quite upset that her student wasn't going outdoors, and so we addressed that. And then the next piece of that was she had threatened to take recess away. And so the substitute teacher, myself, and my parents had to have a reason as that happened. And she said, well, it happened last year. And my feedback to you is that substitutes need to be told that this is a protocol at school, like, that's old school, this is new school. So I hear that loud and clear, it's definitely great feedback to have. We have a substitute teacher this year, long-term, kind of selling, they're both coming out of the same district, they're from another district, they naturally are very close to us. And so same type of piece, there are recent behaviors that happened. She asked students to sit against the wall for two minutes so that they could see how the others were engaging. A parent was quite upset. An email that came to you was from that communication to the parents, something, wait, your two kids are not in either of these classes. She said, no, this is a conversation last night, this is through text, I'm sorry that I just didn't come to you. So again, we've had those conversations, we talked about expectations at school. So for me, my takeaway was that the people who are just part and bit these people who are just hardened embedded in our culture, I feel like, oh, I'll do something. We just haven't something. Like I have a student who starts his evening recess, he can't be with his, um, cohort of kids just because the room which he's using is very angry. So he can invite two friends. We have basketball that happens. So he has three basketball breaks. That's his sport of choice right now. He's still getting his thirty minutes outside. It just is at a different time. Um, and so for me, my piece is I need to do a better job of engaging with those substitutes who are coming in. Say, hey, this is the second or yesterday, the outdoor piece. Yes, we have recess. I thought you meant recess. It's something that I feel is sacred. How can I help you to not be, what I would say, more old school and more, um, so that's kind of where we're at. I was surprised, yes, by the emails that I both, that I received, um, kind of in open communication and just having that conversation today. It was like, okay, like there, um.
I, I will say, Maro, I think that there is a piece of when a student is dangerous or destructive at recess, that they may be set inside, um, that they need to be separated from the group, that they may be asked to step aside. And it, and like I said, that's not necessarily something that we would do all of the time. But when there's a safety concern, we feel like that's got to be the, the primary piece of that. And so it, for instance, if there's a physical altercation between two kids at recess, that's not something that I expect recess duty people to be able to handle, while also monitoring everybody else. And so there are times where that may be a response. Um, it is certainly not something that we, you know, if you don't do your homework, that is not a recess duty. You know, that's not a takeaway recess kind of thing, which is, as Kate's talking about, old school. You know, I can remember being in fear in second grade that I was not going to be able to go to recess if I didn't get my log side for reading. Um, we also don't do that anymore. So, you know, um, but there are those pieces where it's about what is the behavior that we're trying to intervene in. And like I said, safety is one of those things that we do sometimes have to remove a student from that experience or from that group to be able to, to problem solve that.
Um, thank you. And then I, I want to follow on that. And, um, I think can you talk about it a little more if I heard it properly? With regards to communication around behavior, what you call write-ups incidents?
Yeah, communication.
I think it's a, it's classroom, you guidance parents. Is that, it always, because we, we have received some feedback that there are certain behavior patterns that sometimes the parent feels like, wish I had been brought into the conversation earlier. And that's always being a classroom teacher. It's always a hard thing to, to determine when is it more, when is it a pattern toward? And why do I think I'm handling on my own? But one of the things that's become clear with all of our discipline, each level, is there is this key element of communication on and not just what are our expectations, which are classroom level. And sometimes it doesn't happen until back to school. Like we've been in school for a month and there might be a key expectation that I have no clue about, right? So how could you tell me more about how that communication keeps happening? When is the parent looped in? And I respect that. I'm not saying parents should be looped in always. I'm just asking, what are the efforts we make to be transparent in what's happening and how we're communicating and how the message is being received? So it can be supported.
I think it's situational. So again, I could tier one. I think it just tier one in general practice, I feel like it starts to become a pattern. Usually you see that level of disrespect. A lot of times my teacher will send that email. And so that email is our first point of conversation. I think that when it becomes a behavior that they need, when I say goes into that tier two, I think that communication form comes into place. Um, for some students, we need to scan it and send it if it's not getting home. Or the parent will say, like, we'll send something, you know, so it's a ring call, you know, communication form, and we never got it. So depending on what strategy I have to, it depends. For our tier, for our mind share with your kids, it's built in meetings a lot of the time where, and this student was really, it was representative teacher question last week. And so I called out, I was like, this is nature, like, you haven't seen this in a long time. It's with me, he's de-escalating. I'm just letting him pull off. Um, he can't go back to class right now. These other students are witnesses. I need your help. So she sent a long email so the parents understood what led up to this, um, what happened at the moment. And then I was able to follow it through, through that ongoing, um, just face to face. And then a lot of times I'll just send an email, most of the time, thank you. Okay, here's what we're working on. Here's what you need your help with. So I think it's dependent. I, and sometimes I think we go over too, to be honest. It's, there are some parents who, I don't need to know every little detail. But on the flip side, I think the teachers out there, it's end of saying, okay, I'm trying to do all these pieces and asking for your help, not necessarily. Do you know that extra layer after school? Yeah. And we're making it so a lot is really different. So much of it is learning. And so finding that fine balance between teaching and respect. That they're just not quite there yet. And so we're doing a lot of that modeling. And sometimes parents say, I wish I had known, um, sooner. And it's, uh, it's not that we, I look at this, uh, sooner, it's that we reach a special, you know, okay, you've done all these reviews, so we can have the counseling. It's not, this is important. What else can we do? Is there a care that you want to do at home? That's an instance, is a big one. Okay. And how to ride the bus, how to sit in your seat, um, not have to crawl under your seat. And so really working in those partnerships so that it's not coming from the bus driver as an incident, but the partnership of the school. Where fifth grade, I feel like you've been there for six years and you know what is expected. You know how to be kind. You know how to use a kind tone. You have those strategies. And so that might look to happen.
I would say that the tier two and tier three, I think that's a given, Maro. I think that tier one is that piece, as Kate's saying, it's a little bit more, uh, gray. Because a lot of it is, if I'm working with you and I'm teaching you this skill, it's not a behavioral incident. It's a problem that we're trying to solve, right? And when you realize that that problem isn't able to be solved easily, is when we definitely want to make sure that we're reaching out to parents. So, you know, no teacher wants to send a, a list of things that their, that a student did wrong every day. Um, and no parent wants to receive that. Um, and so if there was a problem at recess and we've been able to problem solve it, and sometimes that's, that's great. And sometimes I'll even say to kids, you might want to talk to mom and dad about this tonight. Um, and I may even send an email to say, if he tells you about this, it's because we talked about it today. Um, but if it's becoming a problem or if there are things that are a pattern, that's when we, we do make sure that we're reaching out to parents. But I do think there is that piece where some parents would like to know sooner and some parents are relieved not to have known about it until that. So it's always kind of looking at that student to be able to say, um, you know, I think, when does it become something where we need that support? And sometimes where is it a benefit to have that support?
I think the other piece, Maro, was when we triage with outside agencies, especially for those students on an IEP with behaviors. Um, some of those parents or therapists want a rule of this. Okay, what went well today? What are we working on? And most of the time that is a true wonderful partnership. But there are times when those emails just become flooded. And so even though we are seeing it as growth, the parents would get it and say, okay, but we're not making growth. And so it's trying to, to walk that by landing at the balance between how we want to give, but we also want to celebrate. And so and not be communicative all the time. Um, and it's a very small population, but there are those expectations.
Thanks. Thank you. And one last very small question that comes up all the time is, um, you know, you mentioned IP, Google Forms, very close to my heart. Um, how much training are we doing with the teachers in the SEO on recognizing when a movement break is necessary? You've got, you know, maybe the class is seventeen, but there are three kids whose behaviors are rising where a simple five-minute movement break would benefit the whole or modeling. Sounds like we all could, you know, get the wiggles out after lunch because our schedule is tough. We go recess, straight into lunch, very hard to sit still, and then into an academic. So I guess that's a roundout way of saying, how often are we talking about group strategies for responding that involve?
So, yeah, I think, it's, yeah, I think that that's something that we had a great deal of conversation with, especially the, the, the last couple of years and around that importance. And you'll see throughout the day whether there are scheduled group body breaks, um, which are throughout K through five, but there also are those opportunities for kids to ask or request a break. Um, especially those students that you just kind of mentioned that may need to move some extra wiggles out. There are so many alternatives. You'll see kids, whether they're, you know, out just taking a loop to in the gym playing basketball, to maybe outside, just getting some fresh air. But I know that our teachers are very understanding and very informed about how a child can successfully participate with their peers and in their classroom. And oftentimes that it means having that opportunity to, to move throughout, including the, the general population, including that class of seventeen. You know, we want to make sure that, you know, throughout after long extended instructional periods, that there's time to stop, reflect and move. Yeah, those little brain breaks.
Funny you ask, because Joe's been at school for Italian. I can't do it, it's a key. Minutes, like, they can't sit, what else? Can't sit. You gotta get him up and dancing. But then they can't bring him in. See, that's so different than high school. Right. And I'm like, so, and the teachers were there. So, but they're just accustomed to doing that. Any other cases, flexible seating and fidgets? And like trying to find that balance between who needs a fidget and having him accessible in that fidget basket versus passing him out to everybody. So again, a strategy of what do I need, what does Kate need to be successful is a big part of what we're doing every day. And that's in partnership with OT, with speech, with vans, little chairs, with these new bucket seats. Again, looking at, I think, going like that, and that's how the individual needs to be to and how to. Sometimes the, the thing on the podium board is actually going to ramp someone else up. So the whole group doesn't know, okay, this kid's going to go down in two seconds. That way they fall down because they can't regulate to come back down.
This kid needs a break from the break.
Right, exactly. Yeah, yeah. Um, and that's okay. So, you know, if there are a lot of sticky notes coming to the office, so I can throw flowers in the back. But that's just because they can't do what the rest of the group is doing. And that's completely acceptable.
And there, there is a piece of that, I think, that we've all tried to normalize that need. Um, that we do have a great deal of, of appreciation for the fact that sitting and listening is not what any of us were made for. Um, and so how do we make sure that we're moving kids, that we're engaging kids, but also how do we normalize the need that, you know, I might fidget with my ring. Um, so maybe that's why I'm wearing it, you know? But a second grader doesn't have something like that. So how do we teach them some of those strategies? You know, you might get up and go to drink a water, even though you don't really need to drink a water. For some of those kids, we have to teach that. So really just making sure that we're kind of normalizing the need to be able to get up, to be able to have a brain break. Um, you know, if you need to doodle for a minute while the teacher is reading aloud, really making sure that that's something that people are aware of and thinking about that strategy as opposed to distraction.
Thank you. Ken, I have no questions, however, I'd just like to comment, um, I'm very impressed with your positivity. I'll applaud you. Great job. Give it up.
We're trying.
Lisa. Ask only one question. But, um, you know, I mean, having seen pet kids go through, and I've seen with very different kids, how it works very differently for them as the polar opposite creatures. And, you know, I really appreciate how much thought you put into trying to create a system that can wrap around everybody where they're at. I guess my question, and this isn't a specific elementary question exactly, but we're trying as a board to sort of think through what's the right approach to K-12, to providing behavior supports and having sort of consistent messaging for kids so that when you send them out the door after fifth grade, that they get to the middle school and they aren't just like Phil's problem, but there's like a sort of like transition. And I just wonder if you have any thoughts on what you see as the most important pieces for them to leave you with? And what are the most important pieces that we should be trying to think about K-12? And I know that's very open-ended, but it doesn't work if they learn one thing in kindergarten and then like a totally different thing in sixth grade and a totally different thing in ninth grade.
I don't have the answer to that, but I will say our transition meeting is how our super helpful. And so we need, from a specialist perspective, it also would be, I think, tracking some of those behaviors. This is, you know, the patterns that we're seeing, especially in that tier three and some of those tier two or entering tier three. Um, I think the current like agent piece is valuable on partnering or not partnering, the language that we're using. Uh, I think sometimes there's social norms within a group of who they're choosing as friends. And so even though that, that people are choosing is not always in their best interest, it has to, I mentioned, wrong, is helpful. Um, I just, I might think of brain development, what a little has to what a big has is so drastically different. And so I always look at it as working with a place to give them a strategy to advocate for themselves, I think, we ask to get to middle school. And what do they have that they know that they can use, um, when things get difficult, whether socially, academically, for the teacher. I think we're all on that same page. We're just, we all have transition meetings. We all have good communication.
Yeah, I, I agree. And those are really helpful. And one other thing that comes to mind for me, Lisa, is really just the idea that we're, we're developing humans. We're not just, you know, we're, we're not just elementary administrators. So we're taking these five-year-olds and we're watching them grow until they're ten. And yes, we're going to hand them off. And I, I think that, uh, kind of preparing them to those changing expectations is something that I always think about. And as I said before, you know, understanding what's, what's acceptable in one environment may not be acceptable in the other is the first way to do that. And also to understand that as you grow, expectations change. And so, you know, we want to do that gradually and incrementally. So they're not like slapped in the face with like, oh my gosh, I can't believe I'm not ready to handle this kind of thing. But also the idea that it's expected that things are going to get a little bit harder. It's expected that you're going to have higher expectations. It's expected that if you push a student in kindergarten, there's a different response to that than if you do that in fifth grade. Because you're at a different level and there's different expectations for that. And so really thinking about that from the standpoint of having those conversations with kids along the way, about growing up is also about changing responsibility and different expectations. And when we're sending them off to middle school, it is what I hope they feel like as they leave this like place where they feel like they're the king of the world and they're going to a place where they're one of many and they're going to meet new friends and explore different things, but, and also that they understand that that comes with different expectations.
Oh, you finished, Lisa. I said one. I don't think I go with it myself, the one, but I'll, I'll tell you. Uh, so, let's see. Um, I guess my first question is, can you, maybe each of you or I don't know, a couple of you, just give us, um, some examples of what consequences kids do experience at school and explain kind of how those consequences are determined? Both either by teachers and then onto the next level. What, what do you, what do you, I respect the fact that this is really the way you think of it, but what do you use to sort of get kids in line when they are not, when, when the tier one instruction. I think that's something I can.
I know, but I imagine you have some in mind or something. What I would just say is the huge piece about, you know, if there's an issue, comes down to, to conversation. So, you know, we were saying earlier, there are oftentimes for an elementary school student in, you know, it could even be in a, whether it's kindergarten, you've got a class of fifteen. It's not like if this happens, then this happens. But, because each child, we really do try to support them in their unique, in, in their unique stance, who they are. But what I will say is if there's an issue, say, we talked about four square and that's something, we, we're joking about it, but it's absolutely something. It's a competitive game. And oftentimes we're seeing out in competitive games that there can be issues that kids have. So if there's an issue, it may be that they take a break from that game for a period of time. So, you know, the first time, it may be just for, for today. That would be, weren't successful. So, you know, we're going to ask you to take a break from four square today. Well, you go back tomorrow and you have another, another really difficult time where you're yelling at a kid or you target them or you do whatever. And then we'll say, we're going to take a, we're going to take a break for this. But it's not, you know, I, I, what I would say is that's not the exact same case for the fourth graders as it would be for the kindergarten. What we try to do is, is really talk to them through. They might have to take a break for a while and we have them reapply. We have them talk about their recess rules. So, you know, I'm not sure if you're going to get the exact answer from everything. If you hurt somebody, that's a major, that's a dangerous and destructive behavior across the three buildings. Then you're going to come and see the principal and you're going to, you know, you're going to maybe be connected with your behaviorist or whatever. That's a phone call home. That's where we talk about the why behind it. And our hope is, as we talked about, we tell kids, we're going to make a fix. We're going to have a harsh start tomorrow. Um, but it's not if this happens, then this happens each and every time. Like it's just not as clean as that. If that makes sense. That was quite humble of the answer.
Oh, and I think one of the things that, that I always try to think about is what's the problem we're trying to solve, right? And that might lead to what that, what that consequence is, but also what that problem solving is. Because it's, I will say for any of the three of us, it's not that a student comes in and we hand them their, their punishment, right? It's really that we're thinking about how do we solve this problem? So, one of the strategies that I use, I always talk with kids about problems for good, problems for others. So what was going on? Maybe you were really frustrated because you felt like they were targeting you in four square. That's frustrating. And so you lashed out and you yelled at people, and so yelling at people made other people feel disrespected. That's a problem with that. So thinking about where that problem becomes, and again, some of that might be, what do you think is a reasonable consequence? Or how are we gonna make this right? And a student may say, I'm not a politician, I don't do anything wrong. Okay, well then how are we going to think about how you're going to put some good back in the community with that? Well, maybe I can't hit play four square until I'm ready to follow the rules. Okay, you know, so sometimes that's a conversation that might lead to that, and it might be that they aren't able to come up with that, and I'm kind of deciding that for them, so to speak. But I think so much of that is also about what's the actual thing that we're trying to address here. So is this a pattern of disrespectful engagement with a certain group of kids? Well, now we gotta have a conversation about that social dynamic, what we're gonna do about that. Right? And it might be that we're having a problem that somebody is, has a really low tolerance and uses physical aggression to solve a problem. Well, now we've got a different problem to solve, right? So it's really thinking about what that problem is that we're gonna solve, and then how we're going to address it. So I do think that sometimes removal from the group is something that that will happen, and that serves as a place for that student to step back, but also for the rest of the community to kind of understand that that problem is being addressed. So I think that that, you know, your question is kind of, what does that look like? I think often it looks like removal from the group in one way or another. And it might be for five minutes problem solve, and it might be, like I said, it may be that that student said, I'm not gonna play four square for the week. Or I might say, it seems like one day isn't enough for you. Maybe we gotta talk about trying to get on Monday.
Then navigating the waters, I think for some of those kids, that's their go-to, and so they don't know what to do when you remove them from that situation. So then we have to talk about, okay, so who are you going to choose to play with? How are you going to engage in that? So even today, the whole thing went down at Manhattan, he got mad, he swore at everybody, and it was about one student, but eight kids hurt. And so we had, so he came in after recess really upset, really upset, and I had lunch with him, we had lunch with the classroom teacher, um, and myself, and we talked about like, okay, so you were upset, like Aaron had said, went through the process. How you responded, now all of these kids are thinking it's towards them when they're really bystanders, and this is what was used, inappropriate language, it's unacceptable. So how are we going to make this right tomorrow? And going through that process. And so, he and his fixation was on that communication more than only, I don't want you to settle. So I said to him, let's write this together. So by the end of the day, I wrote it, he approved it, and he said, I will bring this home, and I'm like, because they have to get something for the parent. I know we're at practice school tomorrow, so I already got, I found my mom's, I made a great conversation. He understands how this impacted him, um, and his friends. And thanks for helping me twice. So he's gonna choose to not be part of Manhattan, because he's like, I just go from zero to a hundred, Mrs. Gallian. Um, which is hard in language in the classroom. Um, I think the other piece is, sometimes teachers will say, these are the things that we're seeing, I need help, and I'll go into the room, and we just do like an open circle of conversation. And so it's just a conversation, so I'm not that bad guy, but I'm there to help facilitate. Um, because that's one of the things I really try to make the pipeline, because I don't wanna be the principal who's being, like, I have a job. Obviously, I want to get accountable, but I also want to problem solve it. So I want them to be able to trust that I'm going to help them through this, and not be the one who has to come out. So now that's sort of times when I struggle when I get that you need to come here, and your procedure is a bad person, like, I'm not coming out just because you're in charge, doesn't mean I can come out. So working through that, and it doesn't happen often, but it does. And so walking that fine line of showing support, um, but also having to hold them accountable. So the others feel safe, because that's another piece I don't think we've talked as much about, is they're one member of a larger community, so it could be a classroom, it could be a grade level, it could be a school.
So, I love everything I've heard from you guys tonight, and, um, but I wanna go back to something that's more relevant, because it does feel a bit like there's a disconnect between the philosophies that you are describing and, um, and what we're hearing from parents. And and it may, I don't believe that it's just, um, you know, when there's a substitute in the classroom. I know from my own experience, but not how it was, and that was only a few years ago. Um, so, uh, so what I guess I wanna understand is how do you know what's happening in tier one in the classroom when you haven't been brought in yet? And how do you ensure that your philosophies are being carried out in the classroom every day?
Well, for me, some of it's walkthroughs, and some of it's, um, I spend a lot of time to take out the chapters, you can pick up on conversations that with the teacher. Um, sometimes the PTA meetings or conversations will be had about parents. Um, I know this is what my kid is doing, and so I feel like RPTA is turned into kind of a a social norm of of parenting, and so there's the PTA aspect of it, but it's also just um, sometimes coming together, talking about some of the things that we're dealing with. Um, and then I think there's just those pieces, like my EVA team is really, I feel like they're they're the heart and soul. They see every single student, and so they see from a different perspective of the classroom teachers. And so, um, they'll go to the teacher and say, I am noticing these behavior changes, or you notice me, that usually I'm included in those emails. And it's more, it's just as a way to help bridge, so that there's a level of respect, and so there's can be conversations that will happen that way. The RTI process isn't always academics, and so when the teacher's asking for help, or they, you know, if you met the person, just come and open your mouth and tell me like, the teacher asked me, I just can't do it, I need help, like, I need a break, I I have a broken record, they're not hearing what I'm saying. And so I didn't know there was a concern prior to that, um, but she totally got caught in the left to come and say, okay, and so we had a conversation on what that looks like. And I think staff meetings have had a lot of conversations come up in staff meetings as, um, staff meetings have shifted, and it's not really top-down, it's more of a conversation, so a lot of the information goes out from maybe an email, but those staff meetings are just a way for teachers to express and have conversations, and so then you start to see the patterns and that out. I I guess I'm still, I'm struggling because even when you're out at recesses, recess, what has been the calmest of the year this year? In in for many years, and so, um, I don't, I I don't know why, I don't know if it's just we're teaching more on those grace of conduct, or grace and courtesy, and that level of respect, or if it's just embedded in what they've known for so long, and I think some of it was when we had half days, it was bested. Oh, you know, a small group, and then they've all come together. We dealt with the grace in this of May last year, it just became one, how to play. And there's enough out there for everybody, like, it's not where before, like, the same kids at sports, the same kids kind of did their thing, and now like everyone has, there's cornhole, there's jump rope, there's chalk. It's not just the ones I said that.
I will say, I think that sometimes the thing that happened maybe two years ago, a thing that happened, you know, a one-off. I'm I'm just gonna say as a parent, sometimes I threaten things that I would never really take away. Um, you know, and you know, and and as a parent, I I might sometimes, um, forget that my philosophy is to grow my own children, and, um, you know, make a bad choice myself. And so I'm not gonna say that that never happens with a teacher, where a teacher says, that's it, gee, you know, you're gonna owe me five minutes at recess, and then they're like, oh my god, I can't believe I said that, right? And it, so I do think that sometimes that happens, and I think that that's about conversation and about that idea of sometimes there are things that go against our philosophy, that it might be a signal that that you're asking for help. And so that is something that, one of the things that I've, um, started to kind of keep keep track of in our behavior reports, and we do use Google Forms, so it makes it really easy, is that every month I I run a new spreadsheet, because when I'm looking at them individually, I may not pick up on patterns. But I might notice that third grade recess is coming up all of the time. So then we're gonna have a child study team meeting where we focus not on a particular student, but that we talk about third grade recess, and start saying, so it it sounds like you guys are getting frustrated with what's going on out there. It's not going well. What supports can we put in place? How can we do this? But the other piece that you may start to see is who are those teachers who are writing behavior reports more often, and why is that? Is that because of the dynamic in the classroom? Is it because of the needs in the classroom, that we need to be supporting things differently? Or is it because that teacher knows something else? And so starting to figure out those pieces of it, and that's where the data gives us more than just how many instances of physical aggression have we had, right? It gives us more about what's the tenor of that, and why are these things coming across? Or, by the way, are they not coming across, and yet you're really frustrated, and you're telling me that you're frustrated, and I'm saying, how am I supposed to know that? Right? And so then we can have those conversations about that. And so I do think that part of that is making sure that we're available and that we're in classrooms. I think that tier one isn't necessarily where it breaks down. I think it's the tier two, I'll say. That sometimes those universal supports are the part that people are doing a really good job with. But when it gets to tier two, sometimes that's where frustration sets in. And that's where as administrators, we've gotta make sure that we're supporting our staff as well as our students. Um, and I think we've tried to be really reflective of that. Um, but like I said, I do think that mistakes happen, and I think that that's, that is where we need to continue to have conversation about it. And, um, and I also think that sometimes parents don't necessarily feel like they can express that to the teacher or express that to us. And as a board, I would just ask, if you're hearing those things, that you ask people comments. Because sometimes they're situational, and sometimes they become bigger because you've thought about it and you're frustrated by it. And so the next time, it might even make sense, you might even be on board with it, but you're like, this is happening all the time, right? So I think that that's the the piece that we need to make sure that, uh, the community feels like they're involved in those conversations. And that goes back to what Margo was saying about communication, how do we make sure that we're involving parents?
Even understanding language, like, especially, we made a whole vocabulary sheet to give to parents, and so, like, take a break. I came to her, and I said, Kate, I don't understand, take a break, please. And part of it is to say to those students, go take a break, you need to regroup. Here's five minutes, here's your timer, and I, you know, those little pieces that you forget is just part of what we do. But then when you start to see the teacher, it's always having the student take a break. To me, that's, and it's like, okay, how can we help you? Or we have a field trip, and we have the anxiety you're at, so and so is going to run, or so and so is going to start to feel that. So I think going back to, maybe not know what's happening all the time in the classroom, that things kind of come to the surface, and we can say, okay, so like, give me the pattern, and how can we help you? Everyone's going off, and those same kids are the ones that worry, so to say.
I have a couple of specific questions, and then I have a sort of broader question. So, uh, specific, I'll just sort of rattle them up, but um, part of your tiers, you talked about, um, social groups, and so I guess I'm wondering, you know, I think there was an issue, uh, or maybe Franklin has some social groups after school, and he has some sort of issues with hiring people to do after-school programs, but I guess I'm wondering, um, besides a lunch bunch, are there any other options, opportunities for social groups, um, to happen within the school day or out of the school day, and is there something that we can do to sort of expand on that and help address that sort of need, I guess, because I think that was part of your tiers, was that social group was part of it?
So I I I can speak, um, specific to New Franklin. So we're actually pretty lucky in a sense of we use the the data that we're collecting from, whether it's our teachers or from the behavior forums, that our two guidance counselors are able to conduct their, uh, a couple of different types of of social groups. I will say there's these tier two, um, informal, you might see a six-week kind of gathering of kids during lunch, and activity. There are also, within the special education realm, uh, what they call social skills groups, which are very specific and tied to work with perhaps our behaviorist, our speech and language pathologist, and, um, guidance counselor as well. And those are groups that are done all year long, probably once or even twice a week, depending on the the needs that that the child is producing. So we we don't hold those, we hold those during the daytime. And so at this point, right now, you know, we're able to kind of meet the needs within the school day that that we felt that we were able to address, because we try to keep them kind of short-term, and rotate kids, kind of rotate kids through, so that kind of answered your question.
And then is the other school similar in that way, or I mean, is there, I guess, you know, we're sort of talking about these kids that are being in the office. I guess, sort of my follow-up question was, my son's in third grade, he goes to Donnarumma. He sort of provided me input, I don't get a lot of input from him these days, but, um, he did provide me input that a lot of some the interactions that he's witnessing are happening at lunch. I think this time of year is obviously very different than it did a few months ago. But, um, it's very clear to him, you know, who ends up in the office, who ends up with lunch bunch. He also mentioned that there is a the a table or a seat that was separated from the rest of the kids in the lunchroom. Um, he's mentioned a table getting in trouble that, or maybe getting in trouble at recess or something, and the whole, you know, so table. Somebody at the table got in trouble, so the whole table got in trouble, and then instead of sitting at their lunch on the risers. Um, and so I guess, you know, I don't know if this is a lunch monitors issue, where you're hiring people, or where, you know, the district's hiring people for low pay, and there's not this sort of, you know, there's only so much a lunch monitor can do, so I always kind of have this concern that there's such an opportunity at recess, and I think we talked about addressing it, you know, I know with Donnarumma, they were addressing having that naturalist person come in from white pine and sort of the, you know, facilitating interactions at recess. But I always sort of viewed recess, and even the lunchroom, as a, this opportunity to really engage kids, especially coming from, um, my son coming from the UNH Child Study Center, where that's a huge piece of their curriculum, is that outside piece and that social interaction piece. So I guess I wondered if you could sort of speak to that, and, um, you know, I think my concern with it really wholeheartedly is that my son doesn't really have a lot of things to identify other kids as. And so when he identifies them as a problem kid, it's because he sees them at separated at lunch, he sees them, he doesn't wanna sit with them because he don't wanna get in trouble at the table again, sort of thing. And so, you know, maybe as the school year's going on, he's he's had a lot better bonds with some of these kids, but I think, right at the beginning of school year, is there a way that we can make the school year easier, better, or establish these relationships quicker? Um, in that way, we're helping to facilitate the social interaction, or providing some sort of other mechanism other than a lunch monitor. I guess, uh, you know, I think there's a lot there, but I don't know if you could speak to any of that.
Sure, so, um, there is lunch bunches, uh, the counselors set, uh, set up at the end of the year. So there are some students who have a lunch bunch because we're teaching the strategy during that time, and they keep a better friend, so that's it's not just one-on-one. Um, and so sometimes that is a student leaving the lunchroom, and I can say, we're important to go with them down to the sort of grade to engage in these conversations. Uh, as far as lunch monitors, I feel like we've spent a lot of time out with them. My perspective is a little bit of a smooth here. Uh, but some of those behaviors, I think, in fairness, from the manual's perspective, there are some students who are at the tier three level, who lunch is really difficult. And so our ultimate goal is to have them be part of the social network of lunch, but it does not work. And so we wanna give them the benefit of the doubt that those strategies can be put into place, but there are times that they definitely want to stand out because they're being dismissed for inappropriate behavior, being rude to the table mate. And then there is a table, whereas we have a table with red chairs where those, that's a free table, and then there's another table where they, um, sometimes the behaviors, they're just not, he wants to be redirected. It doesn't warrant to come to me, but it's like, go, basically take a break, bring your lunch, have a seat, engage in a conversation. Some students, that needs to be at the end of lunch, when they finish their lunch, and the board, and they wanna get outside, or they wanna go back to class, and so they start opening their ears, and sometimes it's like, we're remembering the situations, the other kids can have a civil lunch. Uh, as far as after-school activities, I don't, we don't have the same systems that Juman has in place, um, for smart lunch social pieces. I do have teachers who have students who stay after with them, um, and engage in some of those conversations, again, depending on the student, depending on the situation, depending.
And I I mean, I would say, I think your your question has a lot of layers there, Liz, but I think that, um, there's a lot of similarities in the whole harbor as well. I do think that we find opportunities to pull those groups together. We do use sometimes intervention time, depending on what that group or dynamic looks like. We do use, um, we have a couple of programs that meet in the morning, um, that kind of start at breakfast time and move through the start of the day. So we're finding those pockets of time, because we do value it, so making sure that that becomes a priority. Just like we would want to intervene if the student isn't learning to read, we want to intervene if the student is struggling socially. And so that's the piece where, um, it really comes down to what's that grade level look like, what's that student need look like? Where can we make it fit? Um, but it is very much on our mind, and so it's something that, um, you know, and like I said, it becomes another teaching opportunity, so we're not thinking this as an extra, we're thinking of it as a medium. And really trying to make sure that we're finding that.
And is there still recess, like, do you still have white pine, or do you still have people facilitating interaction at recess?
That was not worked as well as we wanted to, let's just say that.
And then, was it the schools ever, um, where does the line fall for big body play? So I mean, big body play is a huge part of SEO, uh, from the earlier levels, but then we're saying, as soon as you get to public school, do not touch each other, or you can touch each other, uh, big body play at home. Is that, is that for every grade, or are we allowing kindergartners to big body play? I mean, when I went to Donnarumma, I mean, when I went to Donnarumma, we used to play rugby at recess and lunch monitors were there watching us. So we would tackle each other. So I guess I.
I think that's hard to say we don't do that.
No.
Yeah, but I guess my, my concern though is that we're sort of missing this. Because I think the nature of playground sort of pulls this climbing and body play into it. But I guess part of learning your boundaries and learning your each other, I mean, some kids are obviously safer than others and some kids have more experience with this than others. But is there like, is it just across the board or is there ever an opportunity? And why, and why are we drawing that line? Is that best practice or is that because legally we're sort of, the state says don't do it and so we're not doing it? We don't want to make liability.
I think it comes down to safety. I mean, I'll be honest, I mean, when you're talking about you have typically two, maybe three recess monitors outside and you've got eight kids. That you can't safely watch a rugby game and the rest of the kids and problem solve. And so it, it comes down to what's the resource that's available and how do we make sure that recess is safe? And so that comes down to one of the boundaries physically, but also one of the boundaries of play. So one of the rules that we have is that you're allowed to play tag, but tag is always two finger touch. That's something that's reinforced in the gym, it's reinforced at recess. And so you're not tackling people, you know, you're allowed to play soccer, but you're not allowed to body check people. You can play football, but we don't play, we don't play tackle football. So there are definitely boundaries drawn with that that we are not being physical. And when you think about the difference between kind of a coaching opportunity where kids might be playing that where you've got level of skill and and materials and things like that, but also coaches that are telling you that I do that safely. A second grade teacher does not have that same standpoint. And so what they're doing is they're monitoring play outside.
And we, we also take the lead, like our, our fifth grade soccer, so my fifth grade group is very athletic. But there's rules in a soccer team, there's rules in football, in cats, you have all these systems in place. We don't have a different sound.
Yeah.
Same in lacrosse, if you don't want to go to lacrosse, text that person like a kilo just with them. Where the students are fake at each other.
Yeah.
I'm going to be liable when someone's going to get hurt.
Yeah.
And so you, again, give and take with the littles, you know, but from the soccer net, they're oblivious or climbing into each other because they were as a herd. Where it's just, again, developmental, it's just, it's different.
Okay. And then are suspensions still a thing at the elementary level and where are we seeing those happening?
I would say that they're rare, but they do happen. And really it comes down to safety concerns. You know, I can, I can think of one student this year that I had suspended and it was so that we could train a team. And so it was a student that was having extreme behaviors and we needed to be able to put the right pieces in place for that student to be successful at school. Occasionally there are what I would call interventions that last for a longer period of time, which might be known as in school suspension. Where a student has been unsafe and I would say that safe is definitely the boundary there. And, you know, but I think when you think about that as a discipline consequence, again, I want to, I want to reiterate the idea that it might be the time away from the class, that it's the part of the public consequence, but that there's teaching and opportunity for amends as that as a part of that. So it's not as, you know, I always think of breakfast love, but you know, Saturday detention of sitting in the library by yourself, getting your work done or writing a letter of apology. I do love that movie. But, but don't subscribe to the discipline philosophy around it. And, you know, but I, I think that there is this piece of it where, you know, it's not about the, it's not about the suspension, Liz. It's about what happens while a student is out of class and what's our purpose for that? And like I said, it really comes down to safety, I would say.
And then my last sort of overarching question, and I know that folks probably know I have a little bit of a passion behind this, is, is just a concern. I know it's across the state, probably across the country, that kids with behavioral health issues, oftentimes children with behavioral health issues are undiagnosed or they can't be diagnosed in elementary. And oftentimes what happens, or what the trends have been or what I've seen in the work I've done is that it starts in elementary school, elementary will kind of kick the can, maybe not provide all the services that that really could address it right away. Then the child gets to middle school and now they're almost a full grown adult. And we have some full blown. I don't know that, that we have that issue in Portland. I think it's, you know, but it's, it is, I think it's a national issue. And so I guess I'm sort of wondering if you could speak to, you know, you talk about these behavioral plans. And I understand not wanting to push a kid into an I E P or a five oh four if, if some of the concerns can be addressed in other ways. But, you know, there is a child, the child fine requirement and these children, the behavioral health issues can qualify under other behavioral health condition or impairment. I can't quote the language right off the bat here. So I guess I'm just wondering, and again, this is a, this is a state issue, a national issue across the board. So I guess I'm just wondering, you know, when things are escalating and these kids are getting tier three or even tier two, is there a conversation or should we be having more conversations? You know, is there more work to do? And I'd like to think that of course, that's not in a place where we'd say we want to limit services to a kid. But could we better position kids by identifying through a child fine requirement and offering a five oh four, providing a five oh four and, and doing that and wrapping them around with those services? I don't know if we received extra federal funding from that, that sort of identification. But there is, I do see a little bit concerned where, you know, where there's kids rising to a tier three, two or especially tier three and we're continuing to do behavior, behavior plans and then come middle school, maybe they're actually identified and then they're diagnosed autism or A D C or whatever. And then they have an I E P or a five oh four. So I guess I'm just wondering if you could speak to that at all? And, you know, is there, you know, are we, you know, are we as a community getting better about that? Is it, you know, I don't know, COVID's sort of highlighted, you know, these things, are we doing better than other towns are doing with these situations?
I would say from Ireland, I think we do have a great helping importance.
Yeah.
I think we do an exceptional job of, of tracking data, of engaging with families and getting to some of the things before it's getting the high school and dealing with the larger population base time, not addressing it. I think when I think about our tier three and just the amount of people who are on the table to have conversations. Sometimes it is, especially in testing. Sometimes it's saying, okay, we're, before we go to that, let's down that road, we're going to do X one. And there are those kids who we have to weigh the wagons and we've done everything, we've exhausted every ounce of energy we need to call genetic. And those are those kids who are facing the district. And I'll be honest, that's a really hard thing to say that we can't meet their needs in school. But we also have the support of the district to be able to say they are getting their needs, the needs are being better met in a, out of district placement for whatever reason. Whereas I've been in other situations where it's very, very different. It's a constant fight to support the student.
And Liz, I just want to clarify that as, as Kate talks about these systems of support and these teams of kids, that is sometimes is a referral to special education or to five oh four process. Obviously there are legal requirements for what a student has to have in order to qualify for a five oh four plan or for an I E P. Which, you know, sometimes they have and sometimes they don't. And I think that's your question about diagnosis as well. I think that one of the things that we've really tried to build with our staff as well is with the community is add access to mental health support. And so that's where the partnerships who seek those mental health in the past have been great for it as well. Really making sure that we have that mental health resource because we can't diagnose. We can certainly triage, we can certainly put plans in place and we can work with outside providers. But having the access to then be able to refer to an agency that happened right in school has been huge for us. But I think that, that it is that it's not tier three and then special ed or it's not tier three and then a referral to a five oh four. It says we're looking at that, one of the considerations that those teams may be making is to refer and to evaluate or to collect specific data. And part of what a behavior plan allows you to do is to collect data around what works and what doesn't. So that if you're writing a five oh four plan, for instance, now you know what kind of combinations are successful. And so it is a process that goes in and, you know, it's not the only one.
Okay, yeah, just, you know, I get a little bit concerned. I think the overall issue is that you don't need a diagnosis for a five oh four. And I think kids that are having A D C or behavioral type issues and they're calling for the cracks or they just sort of, you know, kick the can. And I guess I just wondered if, if us as a district, if we're addressing it soon enough? Like should, you know, could we be addressing it sooner? Do you feel that you're supported to, you know, to provide that service sooner?
I think we could all say yes. We feel, we feel really good.
I think that answers the question, Liz. Thank you so much for being with us, for being with us tonight. Our policy committee continues to study the disciplinary policies of our district. So your input is very valuable to that. So we really appreciate you taking the time to be with us tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. And next time can we go with four jokes?
Yeah, yeah. Okay. I know it's keeping getting up to this facility, please do that. I just want to act as one minute. But.
Maybe with the hour we can tighten our questions?
Yes, yes, let's try to, we have to get through this agenda. Okay.
Okay, I'll be brief. So in, in your packet, in the superintendent's board, you have the email correspondence, a couple of emails to you. You have that draft letter that was voted for last meeting for to the Manhattan Church House of Representatives. And it did go to the governor's office, I will say, when, when that became evident to be a need. You have the policy committee minutes from the last policy committee meeting. Also, and it's not, you don't have a document for it, but I would just make mention that Paulette and I think Margo has been following this. Have been talking about a process for revising policies that can be more inclusive with the board and also limit the time necessary to go into great little detail. Be, be ready for that next time we have policies in front of you. And then you have a notice of the retiree reception, which is always a nice event. June fourteenth at our meeting, six thirty, we'll have a reception for all of our retirees and recognized. I would call your attention to one letter of resignation you have in your packet from Mary Lou Shepard from one of our middle school math teachers who is going to take a break and pursue an opportunity abroad for a year. And we certainly wish her well and welcome her application again.
And I would just like to say that retirement reception, my having that our next meeting, we're going to honor Steve and George. That's going to be our opportunity to honor them and thank them for their many years of service to our district. So we've talked about what kind of send off we would do and everyone thought, well, principals thought that that would be the best way to honor Steve.
One more meeting.
We'll do that.
Don't do a happy end. I have a quick, just a request actually, for people that may not have heard the news about how things went down with the House of the Fractal Bill of Rights. Can you just give a quick update? I'm, I'm being optimistic, people's going to watch this.
Right, right. So I, I don't know if I can adequately explain the maneuvering that went on, but essentially where it did appear to be defeated in the house, it ended up at the eleventh hour of being passed. We are hopeful, we have heard anyway through the great findings, through the news, that the governor would intend to veto. And that's where it's.
Okay, administrators of the.
We're going to need to talk, want to see brief?
Thought that we were going to hear a bit more about what Steve talked about in his newsletter to the district on Friday.
Yeah, I was going to do that, Lisa, at the committee meetings.
At one of the committee meetings.
Well, I mean, again, the agenda. Okay. Okay. So thank you. I, it feels like, I feel like a broken record. Thank you very much. The financials, the financials look good. You know that, that our bottom line has been supported by a series of vacancies. Our inability to hire the, some of the ranks like there is, but more specifically clerical, custodial maintenance, we've had, we've had vacancies. There are, you are seeing overages chasing up against the budgets in substitute. But again, we've had a lot of need for substitutes. We raised the rates for some students to try to draw in more, more interested parties to support us as subs. So that was an expected area of variance. I guess I, I tried the last couple of months to remind you about things that are going to definitely be over budget. That's all of them. We talked early on here about the psychology slide being over budget because we simply had to do some evaluations that requires third party support. And that was beyond what had been anticipated. I will tell you in the special ed section of your budget, which is the one fifty, cost under one fifties. We've got a, we're having significant surplus to impede only because some of the contracted services that were anticipated, they were not needed because of the population. But at both elementary and middle level, of course, like our operating lines will go over. But the whole area is, is really doing well. Other than, you know, we've been projecting very long that out of the circuitions and costs will probably go over budget by the end of the month. You saw that and we talked about raising an extra almost $400,000 in the proposed budget for next year because of costs in this area. About school board costs related to our search. We continue to think things are going to be okay and balance out of maintenance and energy costs. And I think we're going to do okay in transportation. So all in, I, I, I think we're doing well and right now I'm getting closer and closer to a cleaner projection, which I normally like to have on the first debate, but I hope you have it here. But by the time we're talking, you'll have some sense of where we're going to land. And again, one of the targets, one of the challenges we're trying to accomplish is to address some of the costs that we have borne this year related to COVID, things that we had in some of our early analysis back in January, for instance, stuff about these are eligible for, for applications to care for the E S R funds. But like the math tutor, math tutors here, but I don't expect we'll shift that dancer because this year we have the vacant, vacant hair positions, et cetera. Plenty of salary money to cover math tutor, right? So things like that, we'll leave as much of that as we can here to create additional flexibility for you with the S R fund. So that's the financial.
And the judge, you raised the amount of money, is that still up? Originally the memo I saw said it was going to be temporary.
I mean, I think we've left it through the end of the school year and we'll have to talk about where we'll set it for the fall when we come back.
It has helped get substitutes correct.
Yeah.
All right, we're going to keep that in mind.
Quick question on, do we anticipate the cost of gas going to cause those problems with transportation or that big entity of field trip events that are happening?
I mean, all of that stuff, all of that stuff has a cost, but I think relative to the, relative to the, to the scale of our budget, you know, the, I, I don't know that, I don't know that the overages that we will see coming in. We have a, in our transportation contract with the bus company, we do have a surcharge that can be applied. The costs are out of a certain range, so we're seeing some of that. I don't think it's enough to, it's not enough to sink us, you know, all by itself in, in the particular account where you, you know, when you see some of those costs hit, we'll see some overages, but in the grand scheme, we're there. I know the question has been asked at city council, we're talking about budget, how are these impact, how are these, in, these costs going to impact us moving forward? And again, even as I look to next year, we're still working to negotiate with bus company, what terms of conditions will look like as we start this new cycle of this school year. Working really hard to make sure that this doesn't become an issue. But again, if you think about the cost of a bus being sixteen plus thousand dollar range every year, this is real as, as cost go, but it, it's not another bus. It doesn't, it's not going to impact us that great.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you for the question. So while I'm talking about the financials, let me, some of you got this. And send those over to Nick. I just want to, I wanted to try to address, it's, it's, it's real simple, it's real simple information based on what we've already been talking about. But there were multiple times the question has been asked about timing or timeline for S R spending. So I took, this will look somewhat familiar to you. I took a document, I shared with you the last couple of times we talked about S R and I just played with it and tried to group these links to give you some sense. And what I'm trying to, or I'm trying to communicate here is that if you look at the green side of the line four, we have imminently some spending out of S R funds. And I just kind of, I'm looking to make sure there's, there isn't some great objection. But when folks have asked me about the timeline, in the process of saying to you, no, I'm not, I'm not asking anybody to contract for an air conditioning project right now. What I do want you to know is, I think we've, we're. I think we've, we're gonna, you're gonna talk about the outdoor education position tonight in the next few minutes. And the social worker we hired already this spring, and the interventionist is coming. Um elementary day, extended day programming is being planned now for the fall to start. Uh there will be some spending on software and materials, you had dollars on the last report that I just pulled this from. Um I could come up with those numbers, I pushed them off to the side because I was really trying to communicate more uh that. Uh high school units of study planning is coming up here at the end of this school year, and there will be programming this summer. We're working on wellness, but I think uh if you ask more specific questions, it looks like the wellness activities that might come out of the dialogue with students and the work of staff. Will be in the new school year when we see that, yep. So those things are happening. I think it's important, I I created a new category here. And I would remind you all that if you didn't peek a bullet at some of those budget conversations we've been having in front of city council. It's important to note that there was, there will be, we we will feel some pressurizing to make some reductions to our budget and. Among the possibilities are to take some of the positions that are being, or that are included in our proposal and shift them into cares, excuse me, E S R funded. For instance, if I name them out, uh we have a guidance position at the middle school, but we're talking about F. That's a position that clearly addresses mental health, could be tied, but through the litmus test about E S R funding to to E S R. A math tutor that I just mentioned that we had at the middle school certainly is, as is the high school interventionist we just talked about. Uh another round of replacement of Chromebooks is something that we have used E S R funds before, we could use it this time, and that would pull seventy five thousand dollars out of our operating budget as proposed for next year. So there's a whole category here in terms of timing. You may consider funding some of those things through E S R so as to relieve them from the operating budget and try to, to try to meet some of the requests that are gonna come from the council and the manager. I I would, if I put words into some of your mouths, because I've already had some individual conversations, I would suggest to you that I think it's really important that we be clear with ourselves and with the council and the community that. Leaving a transition like that is not because we think that they're short term, only that it would help with the immediate funding concerns. But these are, for instance, the guidance also of middle school and that math tutor position, I don't think those are things that we have at any point in our conversation talked about being temporary or short term in nature, these are. These are fixed costs that have become a part of our and really are already becoming a part of our uh our programs in the in building, so. I included that because that's another near term. Uh that's to get me, I think, to the blue, the blue bar, which is, there's a whole lot of bigger projects and and additional dollars. That I really think we need to involve our superintendent uh in the conversation about, and. Uh one of the questions that's been asked, for instance, is when would you, when would be your drop date, what do you have to do to make this stuff happen? And I think that some of the dollars that we might spend on the bigger projects here. Will become a very real challenge by the time we chase up against Christmas, if we wanna make sure that that work is done this next summer. Having said that, I don't think there's any guarantee right now that you could get somebody to do the work or bring in the material by next summer anyway. Because everybody in the country is spending those dollars on many of the same types of projects, so. We have to test that a bit, Kenny can do that for us and give us some sense. And if it's going to be for the following summer, I think that if we are talking about it by this winter, it'll really be set up better because we'll be talking about engaging work. Be happening preliminarily as school in twenty three, four is coming to a close, so that it'll be done by August of twenty four. That money, a big chunk of that money is becoming um uh the deadline for Tuesday is September thirtieth of twenty four, so. Again, just real quick within the hour, but wanted to make sure I gave you some sense of when is this happening, what are the timelines, there's an attempt.
Thank you. That's it, yes, Liz.
Um, it just popped into my mind, I guess, I haven't asked you this before, and obviously I'm new. Where, at what point do we start looking at the budget for twenty three, twenty four, twenty four, twenty five? I mean, obviously, we're comparing it to our budget, but you know, if we're sort of rolling along with the same budget, who's to say some of these, you know, big. You know, big ticket items are actually gonna build the follow-up to a later uh budget, is there a way to sort of plan that or sort of visualize that? Um in the future? I don't know. Like there, you know, we sort of. And I guess the reason why I thought about it, is there a way to sort of have a commitment from the council now that. You know, that they would make maintain our budget, um so that we could sort of integrate some of these other things if we're gonna hold them back now?
So. I get, if I, if I answer your questions, bring on, I think I would say. Uh I I think by design, there's, there is not really a great way to have a commitment in the future periods. Not to, I mean, not the least of which is you have a, every two years you have an election and. And you'd have different, different bodies, different faces, really, that would be main was going to, so I think some of this is to establish our own best path. Uh some of the biggest projects um are capital, and we do have a capital plan. That I think has a track record of being reasonably supported year over year, given that it's been vetted because you kick out six years and start talking about things. And so you you hone some of the pricing estimates, you hone some of the needs that justify them, and so I think in the capital realm, it's a little easier to say that's part of the plan. In the budget, I think it's, it's reasonable or fair to say. We we'll make our best decisions and we'll, we'll work hard with the city manager and representatives of the council to try to. To try the mayor, to try to appreciate that cycle after cycle, we 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 intend that this is going to be supported, we intend that this is going to, like these positions, if we pull these out of the budget. Put them in E S R, the idea is, we are bringing those back in the next period, the next cycle, and the cycle after. If I say that there's no guarantee, the reality is, there isn't really a guarantee for any of them. Good reminder of what we've got there, you know, it's something like that could be a fair game in any given cycle if need be to meet the needs of the of the game and the world of the schools. And yes, I think we do what we tend to try to communicate about that and plan for it. Uh and we'll start that next budget cycle conversation this fall, so as soon as school gets underway, we'll be, we'll be into the throes of that again, so.
And given that the capital plan is sort of six years or, you know, is a substantial period of time. Is there any opportunity to roll any of this air conditioning or some of these bigger items into a capital plan? I know we haven't really discussed that before, we talked about E S R funds for them, but I guess I'm wondering if there's any flexibility with a capital plan.
Uh I mean, I guess it could be, I I think in the, so it was asked at the city council. If the E S R funds could be effectively used to try to offset things already on the capital plan.
Yeah.
And if we're proposing to use it for air conditioning, but air conditioning hasn't been in the capital improvement plan. Why then is this a priority if it wasn't a priority for the capital plan? Couldn't we instead forego the air conditioning and spend it on things that are already in the plan? And and my answer to that was, was, you know, passing a answer, I think, that night, but I think a better, a better attempt at answering the question is to say. This is one time money that can benefit us from a capital perspective in a way that we might not make a priority of in the routine. But it will benefit the school community at those facilities for thirty, forty years. It's a, it's a big thing that it would be really good to have, and it certainly gets to air handling and air quality and things that have been a concern uh through the COVID pandemic. But it's true, they haven't been in the, the capital plan because for these other buildings, for New Franklin, it's better priority, and we're doing it this summer. But New Franklin's landlocked through a couple of highways and air quality and sound concerns, all justified making that move. Not so much the case in the other buildings, and so this is an opportunity to do something that really will advance our capital and our facilities for many, many years. And because it's one time money that comes, isn't going to, you know, it's gonna come again. Uh this hit, it hit the list of things that are really synonymous with the the goals of the E S R funds and really would address a little cap, so. So it, when we said, could this go on the capital plan, I guess it could, but the, the reality is. The suggestion was at least made at the meeting, maybe this shouldn't happen, and things that are already on the capital plan should be used for E S R. That would reduce the tax burden uh uh overall.
And not just, not the end of time, can you give us a brief summary of like what's on the capital plan right now that they're trying to sort of move over to E S R or any bigger?
We can't unpack about that, please.
There wasn't, there wasn't anything specific, it was just a general question of what we might be able to do.
Hopefully.
Yeah, sure, I I appreciate that you brought up, you know, um. But this is, this is, the positions that's being asked are for permanent positions and long term. And I don't have your little pink sheet in front of me that showed all the other positions, so.
There are others.
I'll have that next time, of, you know, where we can go back. Uh I just wanna say for the record, um and I'll go back to my city council members. If I'm very concerned about moving mental health into E S R. If it's not, it does not allow us a guaranteed path that those things will continue. And and I understand that E S R dollars can be used for those things. But the fact that we do have a rollover every two years, the fact that they may be continued or they may not, or it may come against us in our future F T Es. When we're talking about mental health for kids. Um and suicide rates are skyrocketing amongst kids right now. It, you know, we're, we're, we can put off air handling if we need to a little bit. Or I would challenge our city councillors to come back and say, okay, you know what, maybe we have to, we have to be a little more forgiving and graceful to the school community this year. Because mental health has to outweigh some of the things that maybe we need in in our city right now or in other agencies, I don't know, I don't look at the totality of the budget. But I I just want us as a board to think about the discussions we need to have with our council members and and not just nod our heads politely and move. If we need to scrape the barrel somewhere else. Um because we don't have any guarantee if we move it to roll off that these things will continue. And there's serious need for these two positions that were being asked to to cut down, serious need.
Okay, thank you. Okay, let's move on, we're on to old business. The only thing I would like to ask is retreat dates, it seems like the Google docs is all over the place telling dates. Are people available the first, the last week in August? I talked to Zach and he is available the last week in August, it would be a nice. It would probably be two nights, it could possibly be two nights.
I'm sorry, the last week, I thought.
The last week in August, no, it's, Kerry is going to be away and someone else is gonna be away, two people were gonna be away that first week in August. So we can't do, unless we do it without those people, but.
Nancy, what dates are you talking to?
Well, we, we're asking him every, every night in that last week in August is available.
So you're talking about the first day of school.
Yes.
Starts the last week.
Yes, that's why we wanna do it then, because everybody's gonna be here because their kids are going back to school.
Which week are you talking about the twenty, can you give us a date?
The week of the twenty ninth. The week of the twenty ninth, yes. So, people available that night, that week.
Which week, Nancy, give us a.
The week of the twenty ninth of August. Um, no.
That just seems like you're just careful trying to to sensationalize for that.
You can't, you can't do it like two nights that week.
That's what's.
Well, I think our kids are gonna be sort of out of sorts.
Well, then we're back to the first week in August, when we're not gonna have hope.
No, I would be there, I would be in person, but I won't be on Zoom, I will commit my two nights on vacation to be there. Absolutely.
Zach and I talked and we thought that we could get people that last week of August, it might be more convenient, and it would be nice to have every board member present.
I'm really sorry, Nancy, the first two days of school not being home for our kids is a.
Well, how else?
Well, also with a new superintendent, new superintendent and a new, I just feel like I would rather than be focused on the first week of school.
Okay, go back to the first week in August then, I think everybody's available every night else. Um, oh, no, you weren't available two nights, correct?
No, I I will make myself available for that first week. The only day I cannot do is Monday the first, that's my anniversary day.
Okay.
I can let up, but I will give any other night up.
All right, we're trying to.
So we eliminated the, the other dates we were talking about initially in July.
The week of August first.
Oh, I'm sorry.
July, July was.
July is not available.
Two things, July thing.
Okay. So the first week in August, there were two nights that same week.
Could be, you already, you're typing the deal, we got your dates.
Yeah, okay. I didn't know it was gonna be two nights that week, it was good.
It could be.
I thought it was one in July and one on.
Okay. It could be two nights. We're putting on, we have to put together an agenda, um I don't decide to put together a really good agenda.
So we don't know which two nights.
No. Well, the nights that were the most unanimous, or that that you know, maybe.
I don't know.
Of course, and uh. Second, didn't realize I was gonna be asked that right now, I mean.
Go.
Um, get back to me in two minutes, I'll.
Okay. Okay.
All right, so I just, I just wanted to make that clarified, because there were a lot of dates moving around, so. And we also got the, um, does everybody get the emails from the um New Hampshire School Boards Association? Okay, everybody, if you don't, please go on the website and sign yourself up. So you'll get the New Hampshire School Boards Association emails, they send them off. Um.
I'm not getting communications from our.
Oh, well, that, let me finish this first and then we can go to that. Um on October first, at ten AM, the pro- pro pony conference center in Concord. The New Hampshire School Boards Association adopts a really thick packet of resolutions, they do it every year. Um if we wanna submit a resolution, uh we have to do it by July fifteenth, um which is a Friday. So if everybody could look at that email um from the New Hampshire School Boards Association, it's quite lengthy. If you could look through it and see if there are any resolutions that you want to draft. And it could come from our, our school board would have to vote on it, it will come from our school board.
I don't recall us ever making a resolution in the past.
We haven't.
Um, can you give us an example of what is the resolution?
Oh, is that your own word in email, it's everything from.
Nancy, can you just forward that email from that email to everyone, so we all make sure to get what you're looking at.
Yes.
Nancy, can I just ask a quick question about this? So what, I guess we've never done this, but I would hate to think that we would spend an entire board meeting hypothetically talking about this, is there a potential avenue to have that? Dialogue that wouldn't be, you know, three hours on.
One more meeting. Only one more meeting before it would be two hours, right?
We actually go through the, we go through the packet as a board, we have the pass, that's how we do it, we go through the.
Okay.
Packet and we vote on which resolutions we want to support and which we don't.
But if we have one we wanna introduce, how would that, that be done?
Um, I guess if you wanna do that, if you do it by our next meeting, because you're right, we don't, we only have one meeting in June.
Yeah, but she can't say it, no, somehow.
So she's saying at the next meeting.
And then that.
Present it for price.
We have.
And that's one meeting in July.
She.
Is it for four July?
But it would be.
Oh, okay, we have two meetings, then we have the meeting in June and the meeting in July.
What's the meeting in July, I don't think I know.
Twelve, July twelfth. Um, okay, good, so we have two meetings, so if anyone has any resolutions, as I say, in the past, we did never submitted a resolution, but. If anyone has an idea and they would like to certainly do that, we also will go through all the resolutions that they present and we will uh vote on it, we do that, correct?
Um, I don't, we haven't voted each individual thing separately, but but as a, as a document, you can make any suggested change.
Okay.
We're not spending time during the meeting, knowing every.
Yeah, we do it during the meeting. No, we don't go through everything, we just ask that everybody read it ahead of time.
Yes, I don't recall. Right.
And then um if you have a real problem with something, we can take it out.
Okay.
Um or if we wanna add something, we can. Tentative retreat dates, uh the eighth of second, two, 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 and the third of August.
Okay.
What time? Um, the email that you made six, okay, tonight, back eight, tomorrow night.
So maybe no, five to eight versus nine o'clock.
We'll, we'll see what we can do.
Lots of moving parts and lots of.
Okay.
The fourth, the second and the third.
Second and the third, okay.
Just pencil them in and and we're working to. It's not as.
Pretty sneaky, it's.
Not as easy.
Yeah.
Down a date.
Okay.
Okay, and the other, the only other thing, Argo and I are working on school board norms, so we'll present those as sort of we get them finished. Uh, city council has norms, so uh it would be better to take the school board to have norms.
To me, that at the retreat?
Yes, it's on the agenda, yes. Okay, that's all I have for old business.
New business?
So uh new business, uh you have uh the annual sort of uh allowance rule or devote to authorize the superintendent to be able to hire and life issue the contract, finding the contracts in between school board meetings. As you'll see in a moment, we have a large split of hires this week, George and I are busy with interviews throughout this week and next week, and. It would certainly be important for us to be able to secure people, because we're at that timing here where people are looking at what their options are, so you wanna be able to offer and secure. So this uh, this that you can see is 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 individually written to transition from me to Zach in that authority. So this uh this that you can see is 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 integrally written to transition from me to Zach in that authority uh as we get past July. So. Oh wait, I can't do that this week, sorry.
First was Ann, second. I have a question.
All in favor?
I have a question.
Oh, yes.
The recording.
Um so this, just to be clear, this is for, and I understand the expectancy need for right now, but this is just for right now. This is not necessarily moving forward, correct?
Yeah, you you do it every beginning of your summer because you don't need as much in the summer. Yes.
Oh, because I I would like to put hurry practices on the future agenda I O's. I just wanna make sure we're not. Stop, okay.
Okay. Uh consider consideration approval of employment.
I know, we have to go.
Oh, you do, all in favor?
I.
Any votes? Okay, Steve, consideration of approval of employment.
Yeah, I think it's, it would be easy enough to take these as a block. So I'll go through each of the nominations and uh and seek your approval for uh our new hires. I'll start with Alexandra Crowley as a new special education assistant manager at Portwood Middle School. Coming to us most recently from Harrison High School, like Harrison, New York. Um also highlight Steve Przenowski, our new program director, uh he's been identified already for the Lister Academy. Very excited to have some new programs who leave the Lister Academy. Currently assistant principal at Sanborn Regional High School. We have Anne Heady, uh physical education health teacher at Portwood Little School. Uh and comes to us most recently from Linden High School. We have Andrew Hinker, uh social studies teacher for Portwood High School, uh comes to us most recently also from Linden High School. We have Susan Moore, occupational therapist. Susan uh comes across the district. Susan comes to us most recently from Dover's. We have Robert Hofstra, science teacher, Portwood High School. Robert comes to us most recently from Brunswick High School, Union County, Georgia. We have Amanda Brooks, uh sciences, uh physical science teacher at Portwood High School. Amanda comes to us most recently uh from our intern experience at Exeter High School. Laura Thomas, speech language pathologist uh across the district. Laura comes to us most recently from Newfield. Elizabeth Oates, science teacher, Portwood High School. Elizabeth comes to us uh most recently from Drake Academy in Kirori. Uh Lindsay Williams, elementary teacher at Dot Darrow. Lindsay comes to us from Earth Charter School in Spawston, Massachusetts. And Mariah Circle, Circleback, uh our student support teacher at Portwood High School. And Mariah comes to us most recently from Hamilton Middle School down West Palm Beach, Florida.
Okay, Swiss. We have a motion to uh approve these um before we. Second. Okay. Okay, any uh questions? All in favor? I, any votes? Many updates?
So, yeah, so I'll start um and I invite Kim to chime in. The Equity Council met uh for a little bit, I guess. Uh to uh to come together. Uh as you know, the Equity Council had a meeting all year um under Kim's leadership primarily with the help and assistance from New Hampshire Listens. Uh and really sort of growing into what the role, uh what the responsibilities, what the opportunities are for the Equity Council to move our our initiatives around equity, our conversation around equity, inclusion, risk going forward in the district. Uh and at that most recent meeting, um the conversation really was around how do we engage the community in conversation about things that happen, in this case at Portwood High School. But that, for lack of a better term, they don't make the headlines, right? Because when you have a big splash of headline that brings the community, that that's a, that's a conversation point. But there are things that students experience that um that they, they come together and talk about. Oftentimes, it's, you know, you've heard through our discipline presentations at all levels, there are those conversations, reparations, et cetera, between students, et cetera. Uh but yet, um student, particularly students on the Equity Council were looking for a larger conversation, a more community-wide conversation about these things. So they drafted, primarily the students drafted a statement to to be represented as Equity Council to say, hey, you know, we, you know, we have things that go on that we wanna engage the community and talk about. Uh and in that was an opportunity, this Thursday afternoon, at the high school, to come and engage in a conversation. So that we can actually, um you know, again, come to how do we have uh conversations that can help us raise awareness and move our understanding, move our practice around equity. Uh so we're looking forward to that conversation. Honestly, this is something um we've, it's a bumpy process and we struggle with, I believe. Uh which is when do we engage a larger community conversation? Uh and and how do we do that? So again, uh kudos to students who want to help lead some of this conversation. Um and I think it will help all of us sort of, you know, look forward to what that process would look like going forward. Uh the Equity Council itself may indeed play a role in, you know, as things come up that we wanna make sure we're trying to have a kind of conversation with community about, that they can play a connecting role for that work. Um so I don't know, Kim, if there's anything else you want to say around?
Yeah, I sure do. Um so first of all, I have a handout for you guys that kind of outlines the work that we've done this year. So as you know, we started in October and um we've been continuing with our momentum. Um we have come up with a a sort of tentative plan of how we proceed forward. And one of those pieces um is this idea of have, we're having a retreat on June first. Um it's a four-hour retreat. And we've kind of established, and you can read this, some focus on groups that came out of like the one big Equity Council. Um so those include like curriculum review and development, policy, um education pieces for teachers and students, student advisory board. Um and and a data team that's looking at inclusion and exclusion, which the discipline uh conversation we had tonight is very much a part of that. How do we include people and exclude people um in ways that we don't recognize? Um so I do have a handout on that. Uh and we can give you more updates on that because I know it's late. There's also a timeline in here. And I guess what I wanna mention is in May, we had, this month that just went by, our original plan um was to have uh, we've been having like students do a dialogue, um and we were going to have educators do a bit of a dialogue with students. So this whole year has been formative. Um but we did get distracted, or I shouldn't say distracted, we were pulled to um thinking about our role as an Equity Council when it comes to things that happen within our community. Um and we had, there was one meeting on Zoom where the students didn't happen to be present and it was adults. And that was when um Erin was talking about the restorative um piece to it that she spoke about tonight. Um and we thought we need, we need a way for the Equity Council to number one make a statement that um we know these issues occur. Um and that we wanna recognize them and and not sweep them under the carpet. Um and then the other piece to it was, well, we can, we will respond to the community and we will, we will, you know, try to, try to make amends and make things better, whether it's having this open meeting we're having. Or whether we look at um how the person who um perhaps committed the injury, um what are our restorative justice practices? Um and at the high school, um Mrs. Lyons was invited to this special meeting. Um and we don't really have a restorative justice program at this moment in time. And so the students were very concerned about that because you have, you know, a a community acknowledgement and a recognition that these things don't happen in isolation. Um and that there was community injury through something. Um and how do we make certain that the student who, you know, did the deed, you know, or made the mistake um is cared for um and and learns from the situation? So those were the two things that came out of our conversations. There were two meetings. One was a Zoom and the other one um we were at, which was in person. Um and so we did draft that letter that was sent out. Um and we were hoping it was clear in our pillar one that we do want to acknowledge that incident, an incident occurred. Um and the incident was pretty widespread, like it it wasn't in a classroom. It was throughout the hallways of the school or um a video was communicated to the sophomore class. Um and so these, these were li- larger issues that really we felt like we couldn't turn our backs on. So we did utilize our time in May to work on that and bring focus to it. Um and like Steve was saying, it's messy and all communities are learning this right now. So it's, it's not just Portwood School District or Portwood High School. Um we're all trying to figure out a way to move forward. Um in our liaison, the New Hampshire Listens, Kevin, who works at Phillips Exeter in the D E I role, um was very, he he, he's confided that, you know, the restorative justice aspect is not something you do and snap your fingers and it's done. Um and he, he said we should, you know, obviously we are gonna work on it, but how we work on it could take some time. So, yeah.
Anybody have any questions? So, so many questions, but given the time, and I don't think that these are really so much questions for you over the Equity Council. And I've been to as many meetings as I can for that. I think that we speak students are phenomenal. They are great advocates. I think they're really bringing forward so many issues that we really do need to take a hard look at as a district. But I will say as a board member and as a parent, I am absolutely flabbergasted that that letter was very in the link in a district newsletter at three o'clock on a Friday to detail any number of public and racist incidents at the school that have been going on for months. I just don't think that's okay. I think if we care about speaking up to really have equity as a front of mind value and we care about diversity and inclusion, I have to have a fundamental right as a parent to know that the grownups in the building are gonna make my kids safe. And if my child is gonna walk into those hallways next year and see things in those hallways that are attacking them as an individual, whether that's the intention or not, I don't need to know four months later. Like I need to know that day so that I can help my child work through that around my kitchen table at night. And you don't need to tell me like the names of the kids or exactly what they did or violate their privacy, but you can't be hearing about this months later. So I guess my question, and this is more of a question maybe for Steve and George, but this came up with the crisis communications policy and my intention in trying to talk about that language was to have a provision in there for there to be protocols in our response plans at each of the schools so that there would be timely and clear and transparent communication. And I'm not aware of any of those things happening with these incidents and that's a huge concern to me. And I'm not sure if it's because people didn't think that that crisis communications policy applied in this situation. So we need to look at another policy. Or if there's something else going on, but I feel like the police were there. Like my neighbors, you know, on my block like knew about videos of things happening in vandalism, so it wasn't contained to the high school. And we need to be able to make our community aware that we care about these issues. We're taking them head on and we're confronting them and we're handling them. And I guess I'm just not seeing how any of those pieces are being communicated. And I'm sorry, I don't mean to sound harsh, but I'm feeling very emotional because like my kid heard about this and he's afraid. And it's now like, I don't wanna go to high school.
So do you feel?
So this isn't like hypothetical.
Can we let Kim respond to that?
Yeah, so, okay, so number one.
Well, but it's just your mom and mom and mom is communicating to everybody.
Our, our sentiment is the same. And there was actually a little bit of a tension between, this is a bit late and we know that.
Yeah, and I don't mean to pick on you.
But the tension, um and Nick, you were at that meeting, was we still have to do it. And so, um, it's not perfect. Um, we, we did our best to get the letter out there efficiently. Um it did take a couple meetings, um but we wanted it to be thoughtful. Now, here's the gig. Now we have sort of a a protocol of a way to take this and be when an incident does happen. Now we have sort of a, an idea of what we should shoot for. Um and so there, there was a space in there. We're talking and, you know, February and then some nebulous stuff in the middle and then the event in April. Um and then school vacation happened and then we came back and it, we had a speaker come in. Um Reverend Thompson from the N double A C P came in and he spoke to the students and he was quite powerful. Um and and then we, we said, okay, we're gonna be brave and we're gonna, we're gonna do this. And it might not seem like bravery, but it 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 wasn't a big step for us.
I've been asking the question the wrong way. I love the work of the Equity Council. I think the letter is a great thing to put out there. My concern is why didn't we hear from Mary Lyons or why didn't we hear from the district immediately? I'm sorry, I just, I feel like we keep having this conversation. It's a question if we need to change our policies so that they're clearer that this is our intention to communicate with people, then we need to do that. And if it's a question of the policies aren't being followed, then that's a separate issue that I think that we need to address. It's in no way Equity Council issue.
About why, why Equity Council's answering the question.
Like I expect my building principal to own it, communicate it and explain it immediately. And I'm sorry, I don't mean to be so upset, but I'm just really upset.
What, uh.
And we let Steve.
Sure, and and I get that Lisa. So so first of all, Mary Lyons has been involved with the Equity Council on this issue uh a long.
Equity Council issue.
No, but but it is really. It's because.
Well, after the fact, fine, but when you're telling kids that this has happened and they've gotten these emails, it's not like an abstract thing.
Right. So so the work, and then again, I I'll I'll own that, you know, if, if you know, the facts of of the case didn't get out. I know Mary Lyons put something out about the video immediately that was just to say they're aware of it.
Absolutely. She, there is something, I was gonna pull it up. There wasn't, there was something went out.
There it go. Because we told people to read Parents Where. There was nothing that was on Parents.
It said a spam email was.
Yeah.
But that's not how they've told parents to find information. It told them to check Parents Where to be.
It was in Parents Where, I'm gonna pull it up. So so I think my only point is, I think um I, these are complex conversations for sure. And and we wanna, you know, that we're, we're, we're leveraging as much guidance as we can. We know that, that these are conversations that have to happen. We want to make sure we're as inclusive as possible when we do it. Um to Kim's point, for for harm that needs to be repaired, we wanna be thoughtful and deliberate about that. Which, which again, I hear what you're saying about, hey, I wanna know that day, what happened?
But when some emails look.
Wait, let him finish, Lisa.
Police emails.
Lisa, please let him finish.
Does that not fall under our policy to communicate that when the police are involved? And it's like a hate message that went out to like a huge part of the student body on our school email system?
So so and again, as as George mentioned, that there was brought, awareness was brought that there was um a video or email out there. But but I think that's, you know, that is what I think is the opportunity here. Is to try to figure out how do we, and and I think, you know, this is, it's one thing to make a public statement. It's another to actually engage the community in conversation. That's that we actually grow as a community for it. Uh and that's where I feel like the Equity Council should play a role.
So do you think that the policy that we have in place requires communication when an email goes out to the a huge chunk of the student body on school email and it's hate speech and there's a police investigation? Do you think that our school board policy that we have in place for communication requires communication? I guess that's what I'm trying to understand here because there wasn't.
Yeah, so again, the communication may not have have been sufficient, I don't know, but that, there was something sent out on Parents Where.
So I I just, as a PHS parent, I can tell you it was not sufficient. And and it did go out well beyond sophomores. And my ninth grader brought it to me and and was very upset mainly because there was not a space to discuss it. And it was hate and targeted hate message. Um as well as it was not denounced. It was not immediately denounced at the high school. It was not immediately denounced by central office. It was not immediately denounced by our school board. It in 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 the feedback that I got from students and my own students that received the message. It was, we speak of equity, we speak of inclusion, and yet this can be sent out using our public, our our email to many, many, many students.
To many, many, many students, um, and. The leaders of this district do not speak up to denounce it. So for for me, Lisa, I hear where you're coming from around communication, I hear where you're coming from around making schools safe in the hallways, I think. We can always try to do that as much as we possibly can and sadly, we also see with school shootings and other things that. There there are going to be choices that. That administration and faculty just can't control. So what I wanna make sure is happening. Is that we are being transparent, that we are communicating. And that we are doing everything we can do in our power to make things safe, but when choices are made. That completely go against what I feel as a parent, as a school board member and as a member of this community. Just completely goes against the the pride of Portsmouth. Of. Hate messages and and targeting specific groups of people, that is not what this community is about. And it it has upset me as a school board member to have to bite my tongue since February when my child brought me the information. Um. To see that we haven't, it has not been discussion here around this table. It has not been denounced in the most, it should be the, it should not be buried in the league. I am so grateful to Kim and their team on the Equity Council and I agree with you, Steve, that it's not an either or, it has to be an and or. It has to be responsibility of the leaders of this district. And the support of this council and other spaces to have these conversations and I'm so grateful for the work the Equity Council did. Because I felt like no one else was stepping up to do that work in this district.
So which are the next step be? How can we?
Well, it sounds like there's a meeting that's happening. Yeah, well, it says May twenty sixth from three thirty to five, um, an hour and a half meeting. The P H S library for students and staff, students and staff will be separated in this meeting to talk openly about their experience regarding the events. From February and April and any other incidents regarding social justice of P H S. I mean, this sounds like we're gonna need damage control after. This in a couple days because I assume that there's gonna be an open discussion about. What are reevents that I'm just hearing about today? I mean, not that I don't read through every email I get, but I don't read through every email I get and I didn't. I didn't see this until somebody brought it to my attention right now, so.
It's two hours in school, yeah, I'd say.
Yeah, I want to say that.
Information.
Okay, wait, 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 I don't know, it's not all talked at once, please raise your hand, we we, it's a, it's an emotional issue and we need to have some order. Okay.
Um, I I just have to say that I'm very frustrated and embarrassed frankly that I'm, this is the first I'm hearing of this as a school board member and it started in February. That's that's really upsetting to me.
Well, the video event was referred to as April.
Um, cause I'm not a high school parent.
Yeah, so it means a bit, but it's coming out through the Equity Council, like we're learning about these things through Equity Council or how is? How is, how are you learning about these things, Steve? Are you learning about that through the Equity Council or or are these getting reported to the, like, is there not a? Is it not coming to you? Like, I guess I'm sort of wondering what the.
First thing I was gonna add, like, April twentieth, and there was this call on the twenty second.
So it was not with a send, how?
Parents Square.
To who?
And what it did say?
To anybody that's on Parents Where. On who sent it?
Is that the one that said there was a spam email?
Basically.
But it wasn't.
It says the first one is P H S mental spam emails is the subject.
I think there's a problem there, cause it wasn't spam, spam is jumping.
I'm not, I'm not, I'm just telling you when the communication's where I'm not getting.
Okay. Yeah.
Yeah, um. Yeah, uh, I think part of this, I think we are gonna have to talk about this in the Communications Committee as well because it seems like this is pointing. Again, at the overarching issue that the district needs to get better at responding to things, um. Yeah, I mean, in a little of the time, again, I would kind of. Encourage us to maybe look more to what we wanna do about this going forward as a board, if we wanna actually like make any resolutions tonight. Or if we wanna bring to the Communications Committee because it is ten forty two. Um, but. Yeah, uh, I I guess that's actually, that's what that said, thanks to Communications Committee should take this up, that it is a serious issue.
But I guess, I guess I'm wondering if there's gonna need to be damage control or what is gonna be the product? Not so much damage control, because I don't think that's, we need to obviously address the issue. At 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 hand and, you know, from the committee perspective, Equity Committee perspective. What is the next step after this meeting in in a couple days between just the students and teachers? Is there opportunities for parents to speak? Um, and I guess I didn't have my question answered, sort of how are we finding out this? Is it coming from these Equity Council meetings or is it? All these incidences are sort of compiling and now we're saying there's this long span of issues, um. And so I guess, so two parts, what are we planning to do at, like, what's the plan after this meeting? And two, are we finding out more of these things through the Equity Council? Cause I envisioned Equity Council would be a place to discover some greater issues.
Yeah, so, um, the plan is we're taking action. So yes, I a hundred percent agree, it does seem. That it's, you know, it's been a few weeks, but again, we said to ourselves, we will take action. Um, and so. The idea is at the, um, the discussion we have, it's not a dialogue. Um, we wanted teachers and students to be separated so that they could process together. And then there's gonna be an opportunity at the end for people to share as one big group. So that is sort of a piece to this community healing or community voice. From that meeting, um, if it, there is a piece in there that. We're gonna take suggestions on what actionable steps, you know, should happen or in retrospect, what should have happened. Um, and how do we, um, go forward with that? Is that we'll go back to the Equity Council. Um, and as I said, the Equity Council realized that we have two pillars that we really need. One is that community application aspect saying. We're we're sorry our community was injured, um, and not pointing fingers necessarily and shaming people. But being like, as a community, we don't stand for that, um, and this is what we stand for, that healing piece. And then the other piece where the student needs to be cared for because truthfully. I'm not, none of us know, like, how is that person being cared for in the community? Are they getting help? Are they being able to understand why this was not a good choice or how it hurt people? Um, I don't know if that's happening, I'm not privy to that information. Um. So that that's a piece, that's a mystery piece, so that I don't know if that's Equity Council's work or Equity Council's work to say. Here's a beautiful restorative plan that we've been working on with other people. When something goes wrong, this one is needs to happen, or is that, you know, something we all work on together as a community?
Um, do we agree that that would be a good way to proceed is to let the Equity Council come up with a restorative plan that can be supported by the board?
I think that'd be super.
I, you know, is there a board member on the Equity Council?
Lisa.
Okay, Lisa's there, okay.
And Liz used to come in here.
I was before I got my job.
Um, Kristen, Jeffrey comes and you wanted to come.
I wonder if we should have another board member, um, it might be good to have another board member on that committee that can commit to it, you know?
I've discussed that with Kim, I can give.
Okay, so Hope and Lisa will be our representatives to the committee. The equitable Equity Committee will come up with a plan that will, you guys can present to the board. And we can agree that that will be the procedure that we will follow from now on.
Nancy.
And it sounds like it's a situation all of what I've seen.
Things like that is a bigger conversation and with full respect for the work that's being done by the Equity Council, which I think is extremely important and needs to be continued. And supported by the board and supported by our communities are having really important conversations that need to happen. But I also agree with Hope, like, we need to have those long and thoughtful conversations, but we also need to have an immediate. No messing around, we do not tolerate hate speech, period, full stop. I don't care about anything other than hearing that right away, immediately, loud and clear and shouted from the rooftops, okay, like if the email goes out. There should be like no delay. In something going out, not just to the high school, but to the entire district. So you're gonna hear about this, like my kids in the middle school were about it. And you know what? And then they talk to the kids in the elementary school and they hear about it. So these things ripple through our district and have really damaging effects on our kids.
Well, do we need a policy to say that?
That's what I'm asking Steve is why the policy didn't say then it wasn't communicated. So I guess what I'm asking is.
To create a policy.
Yeah.
If the policy in question doesn't cover this incident, then we need a new policy. If the policy we have covers this and it just didn't click in this situation, then that's a separate conversation for administrators to have.
Well, I think, no.
But I don't need to, which is?
You and I have brought up many times too that. We we need to look, we don't have communication, clear communication policies. That's not even a tab in our policy. And so I think.
Do we have a communications committee on this board?
We do.
We do.
And we're not consulting this thing to happen.
Who's on that committee?
I know.
Lisa, but it does not authorize.
And note, please allow some of you guys to, you guys meet again and to clarify this.
We can't clarify things.
We can't, we can't clarify what we don't have authorization in.
Nobody tells us about these things.
So that's not our mission. Well, that's not our mission.
That's a national law, so can you do it now?
But again, I think it is something different, maybe between communication as well as our.
Now, so we don't worry. As well as. All right, my, you guys have a for a half an hour.
Simple as well as policy.
Thank you.
What would you like to cover or not? I have several, several comments. One, um, to Lisa's question, we do have clear. We we updated the crisis cu- uh, prevention and response plan that has communication.
Yes.
I think in light of, you know, agreed, I share the sentiments that it was very hard as a board member to hear about a lot of this three months after that. And looking over all of our policies, um, respect, which is the general one that all of this would fall under, has no communication plan to it. And I think one thing that we're learning is that we need to implement communication into these plans. We've heard it. We've heard it loud and clear that communication is our district's challenge. And so I would, I would like to respectfully request that the Policy Committee. Look into adding communication language to that. Second, to the respect, which is J I C.
To the, to the respect.
I like that to be.
Which is J I C.
Yeah.
And a collaborative effort inviting the Communication Committee to the Policy Committee meeting to discuss that. Secondly, um. I really do appreciate the work of the Equity Council and I think it's extremely important. In my experience in schools, when something like this bubbles up. My concern is when the meeting is held after school. It doesn't send the message that this is so important to us and our community's been so damaged that we are pausing the business of school. To repair it. And so I'm I'm wondering if that was part of the conversation because. Thursday afternoon in little playoffs at A P's, you're not gonna cast. All members who need to be there, particularly those that have been silent. And so I wonder, how are we going? To do that, because I think it's urgent and I, and I think this plan is great and I I do not wanna sound like I'm. But I'm very concerned that we are still not sending a loud and clear message as a district that. We do not tolerate this here. Damage has been done and it's been done to the degree that it's, it has to be fixed now. And that was my question of how, we need to do that, we need to pause. Pause and build and may maybe there was a reason why we couldn't do it during the school day, whether that was discussed in Equity or or with admin, but. I do think there's a different message that's sent, just like one that's sent as an embedded link. As to how serious we take this and how now how widespread the damage has become.
Um, well, I think number one, bringing focus to it was our main point, um, and one of our students was. Very articulate in saying what, what some of the words you just said, like. We say we don't tolerate stuff, but when we don't take action, we really do tolerate it. And so those words have rang in our ears. Um, in terms of how do we respond? Um, we did choose after school simply because. It seemed like the normal thing to do, I guess, but you're, now thinking about what you're saying. We we probably should have said, you know what, let's blow the whistle and let's just have some community conversations about this. Um, during flex in small groups or however we wanna do it, because you are right, people have busy lives. And they may not be able to come and they, they may be the ones that really need to communicate. And I mean, as we move forward and think about these things and then in retrospect, look at them. Can be like, okay, this is what we did this first time, we were just learning. But here's a a better plan, um, and I I think that makes perfect sense. Um, again, we were, we were just making sure that we didn't let it drift into the archives. Um, and it say remember when, it would be more of a, this is not gonna go away and we are gonna approach it. Um, in a respectful way.
Okay, so can we leave it, or can we decide that the Policy Committee and the Communications Committee are gonna meet and talk about this? The Equity Committee is still gonna.
About meeting.
Go forward with its plan to strategize and try to come up with how you handle these situations.
Yep.
And because we have two board members on that committee, they can communicate with policy and communications. So hopefully we can, um. We can make this so that it doesn't happen again. And remember, we have, we, you know, we have new administrators coming in, so we can, um. Talk about that with our new, with our new superintendent, our new, um, principal of our high school. Yes, Liz?
Oh, again, it's a good plan. I just have one follow up. The the letter that went out that I just read. Um, uh, Lisa was talking about and and folks talked about a specific incidence of a spam email or however you wanna classify it. Um. But the letter that just went out talked about ongoing overtime incidents, not just from February to April, that this was an ongoing issue. So I guess I'm wondering, can you elaborate? Is that just the fact that the council's saying that, you know, that people are making racist and homophobic comments all the time and. And, you know, systemic issue across the board or like, why is that part of this letter? If there's just these specific incidences. Why, the letter to me seems like this is, this is an ongoing issue and not just specific emails that were being sent out or one kid in particular.
And we we did talk about that a little bit in the, in the, uh, meeting to draft it and and there was some debate over that particular language just because. Yes, we're talking about a couple of particular instances and. There are students who feel like they run into these things more frequently. I mean, it's not, it's not a. An instance of of large proportion in terms of the scale, but they feel in their, in their own experience something and so. Um, wanting to again, make sure all voices are heard, particularly with students. Is to have that, again, to have that venue, to have that conversation for what that lived experience is. We we certainly learn a lot in listening to the students on the Equity Council for what their experiences are and I think it helps us reflect on how we can be better as a community.
Okay, so I mean, in, I guess I'm, is there a way we should clarify whether in these meetings we're having, whether we're addressing these specific incidents or. Addressing both that and the systemic issue, maybe there needs to be two parts of how, you know, their interplay between. The committee's policy and Equity Council and how these things are managed, I guess.
Yeah. So I would just add that that policy, the Equity Policy A F also does not have a community, it says support, communicate and model, but I think we need to. Kind of study and policy need with the Communication Committee and come up with what does that communication look like under that plan?
Yep.
In the respect, we could have put that.
Yeah, J I C B E and A F, okay.
So Nancy.
Yes.
I know we can't put out an email right now, but I, and I can only speak for myself, but I do want to say that. Phil Davis's words are ringing in my head when he was here and talking about discipline and talking about. You have to nip it in the bud immediately and say, we will not tolerate this. And so I just wanna say as a board member, I do not tolerate what went out on a video of hate language. Targeting any particular groups. And I don't believe our district does, whether that was explicitly communicated out or not. And I do wanna give Steve the opportunity. Cause I know you can't provide details and we we have to think about privacy, but. Once there was identifications made, I I do want people to understand that there was swift question taken.
Yeah, so, yes.
Whether that was communicated out or could be at all. So I don't want people to think that that ha- action has not been taken. And that tolerance has been allowed.
Right, yeah, and again, that that might take away, you know, we wanna make sure this is clearly understood in that particular instance, thoroughly investigated, dealt with. Absolutely. And that communication piece is is critical and it's not, I mean, I think it's a both end, I would say. Uh, but I think the more important conversation is the thoughtful, deliberate conversation with facilitation as we'll have on Thursday. Out of that could come some other plans of action that can help. I mean, this is. This is both a communication issue, but it's also a problem solving issue, right? And that's not gonna be solved without state, that's gonna be together conversation.
Okay, um, I wonder if we should go one step further than folks announcing the, uh. This type of behavior and and given that the school board is just learning about this and talking about it for the first time tonight. Um, should we as a school board?
Um, should we as a school board consider denouncing it publicly? So that at least there is a message from someone doing that.
Yes.
Yes. I don't know.
So.
Two second and I wanna work on that either, but I want to put out, okay, Steve and I will work on a statement, Margot.
Okay.
So Steve, Margot and I will work on a statement, um, that we can put out to the press and to the parents and. Um. Uh, we can do that eight, as soon as possible.
And also, can I, can we just make sure that it's any X? Because I think that. The I think the the focus is on these specific things, but like Steve said, there's people that are experiencing. Uh, instances day in and day out most likely and. So we could just announce any specific as well as any, it just, you know, in general would be as a good too.
Wouldn't we wanna include Kim on that too as our, um. Executive Director of the executive, uh, you know, whatever title.
I have to show myself, yeah, no, no, Steve, I'm sorry, it's in your series, it's a nonprofit now.
I think.
I I would be glad if I had.
I think that's before it goes out and I think it gets to come from the board and from Steve, the Equity Council.
Well, that's what I just said, I said it will come from the board and from Steve.
Right.
And Margot, myself and Steve, if the board wants to see it before it goes out and I'd like to add Kim's name to it, I would like to add her as one of the office. So it'll be the school board, Steve and Kim as a representative, that can be.
Although they've already put their statement out.
They've already put their statement out. That we as a board should be able to write that ourselves.
All right, what, does everybody agree with that, that we won't put Kim in on it?
It's not even, yeah.
Just trying to be there, see.
Right away. But actually, that came from Steve, so in the in the facts, so, you know. All right, we'll do the board, Margot and I and Steve will draft something, we'll send it to all of you and we'll put it out as soon as we can.
I think it's a good message to give in this day and age of, well, there's a lot of. Outrise in hate language going out in society to just say, not welcome, yeah.
But. It's very important that we talk about the efforts of the Equity Committee when it's done.
Yeah, you guys can read it all.
Yeah.
I've, my customer runs, I think, top.
I'm very.
George John.
Please stop.
I said, I think that water's been down if we if we use that letter to talk about the efforts of the the Equity Council. I think it's.
No, but I think you should let people know that.
It should be a very good statement. That we do not, that we do not tolerate hate speech or hate. Uh, Steve.
It's just your second helping.
Motivated by that, that's it.
I don't think it would be nice for people to know that we have Equity Council, that we still are working on this.
And I know their statement.
No.
I'm not, but it's sad.
I think we can tell people in many number of other ways that that's happening. I think it's kind of the Equity Council's job to make sure that the student body knows that it exists. I think that this letter is kind of best spent just simply saying, this is our stand up.
I think we could, sorry, I think we could state what Pip is saying, I think at the, you know, I think we could include a paragraph that says. Says that we're committed to equity and the the efforts that it takes to get there and part of that, you know, through Equity Council and anything else.
Right.
That that we're open as a board to any community feedback of other ways, we could do that.
I agree with you, Liz. Well, let's do it. We'll send out the message and if five people agree that we shouldn't put the Equity Council in the message, then we'll take it out. If four people, if more than five, you know, whatever, we'll just do the the bill of the board. Okay, so, um, we'll draft it up and send it to all of you and uh tell us if you like it or you don't like it, what you don't like.
Can we do that over eight minutes?
Yeah, um.
Five people, that's like a boat. Sorry, I'm not trying to be a pain, I'm just.
We can send it.
Yeah.
Okay.
Is Brian still with us?
Uh, no, so he must be.
Brian, are you there?
He is. Uh, we don't know, he's.
Brian's himself again.
He's talking, he's talking, hold on, took himself off. He's here.
I'm still here, yes.
Brian.
Yes.
Brian?
He's there, he doesn't, I mean.
Oh, he's not in there.
He is there, he is, he's there, he's here.
I'm not sure he was taking the following, but. Okay, where are we on the agenda? Community updates, are there any community updates?
I do, I have one. Uh, June seventh is, uh, I think it's June seventh, I have the email pulled up. Uh, June seventh is, uh, New Hampshire gives, um, and, uh, futures, uh. Ba 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 ba, here it is, um. Uh, June seventh, uh, is, uh, New Hampshire gives, we'll start June seventh at five P M, two weeks from today. Um, so, uh, futures has some matching donations generously, uh, for members of the community. Uh, if there's any other members in the community that wanna provide matching donations, uh, please reach out to Jenny Tiverski, the futures coordinator at the high school, or reach out to Steve or any one of us will get you in touch. Um, and, uh, just like s- support for, um, the future program as part of an H gives, uh, if folks are considering donating. Please.
Thank you, Liz.
Um, anyone else?
Yes, me.
Uh, yeah, just a couple of things from the school, so, uh, obviously, uh, Sondheim on Sondheim was big success, I found myself very good. Uh, I, yeah, I was ridiculously impressed with how many just individual acting parts there were and how I think that really was the occasion, so. Yeah, it was a great show. Uh, other than that, um, Student Council has passed its, uh, what, to my knowledge, is the first ever, um, Student Council. Uh, constitutional amendment. Uh, which, um, allowed the Student Council to vote directly change the rules for of conduct for the meeting rather than having, uh, the adult members manage that.
Great, awesome.
Yeah, and then, uh, we used that power immediately to. Immediately to allow ourselves to, uh, create exploratory committees to more efficiently, um. Kind of investigate issues as a council without actually circumventing a, uh, democratic process by, um, acting about, uh, putting anything on it. So, um, that's that. And then also, uh, just in today, the debate team, uh, apparently got our school onto the. Uh, National Speech and Debate Association Charter School List. Uh, which makes us one of twenty two schools in New Hampshire out of this thing, or in, sorry, not in New Hampshire, in America out of this thing, and the only school in New Hampshire. So. Yeah, um.
Congratulations.
Yeah.
That was awesome.
So, yeah, really proud of all of them, thank you.
Thank you.
And did your, um, did the thing air, the, uh, you, uh.
Renegade challenge.
Renegade challenge, did that air?
Uh, yes, there's a lot we can.
All right. Okay, uh, Margot have something?
Not that it's one to follow Nick, but that, but as Steve alluded to, when you get your, when when you will be emailed the next policy meeting agenda. You will see the new format of providing effective communication questions to the Policy Committee, which I will be the receiver of information. I will disseminate it to the whole committee, we're trying to streamline. So that as you see things on the agenda, it would be helpful to. Hear in advance of the meeting, the questions you might have with it, the intent of the policy. Your goals for it, that can be taken to the Policy Committee meeting. And then with regards to edits, you'll see a new. Thing that we're trying that we think will, um, make that editing process more successful for everyone. So hey, time to do the, when it helps.
And we're trying to get the agenda out earlier so that people will have time to look at those policies, position of the.
Yes.
That would be very helpful, yes.
Yeah, we're, yeah, we're gonna, we're gonna try to get it out by Wednesday or Thursday, the latest, correct?
Um, that's for school board agendas.
Okay.
Policy committee agendas, we're trying to work with a five day notice.
Okay. Okay. Uh, who has something?
Yeah, quickly, um. Spending a little bit of conversation with Councilmember Denton, um, trying to reinvigorate our farm to school program. Um, we have a plan that we're working on in terms of leadership at different buildings, um, and how we can sort of stipend them. I talked to Mr. Zadovac about that, um, so I wanted to let you know that and we did harvest our first lettuce, we had a leaf party today from the garden, so that was fun. Um. Recycling, uh, reduction has happened at the high school. Uh, we've moved from Dasani product to a rain product which comes in, uh, reusable and recyclable aluminum bottles. So that's kind of fun. Um, and then we had the, um, spring market, which was really, really well attended. And our student artists, as usual, stole the show. Um, and and people that you might not con- like consider it as like a. Artist, like museum of fine arts, but, um, students who baked goods and, um.
Make jury.
Yeah, like, like.
Sixth graders, like.
Really, really nice stuff. Oh, yeah, observing with exposed.
Really, really nice stuff, like. A lot of talented kids in our district.
Yeah. Yeah, and I think they, I think they did what's fun, yeah.
Um, okay, uh, before we adjourn, I just, Ian, you have a question about parent square. Uh, how do you, you don't get parent square, is there anybody else that doesn't get parent square? Okay.
You gotta sign up for it. You gotta sign up, you gotta add your name to the list.
No, we, uh, you do the external users list, so that's fine, man.
Okay. Okay, so everyone, everyone else?
Uh, I don't know, I said we would have to add you, I don't know, I thought, I thought.
Yeah, I thought all board members.
I thought you were, but I'll check.
Okay, thank you.
But does, do they need to create their own account though of, and then you add them to it?
No.
Uh.
No, not through email.
First, if you want all the full, and if you want all the full.
Tutorial?
capabilities of of parent square, getting it in your own language, things like that, then you could create an account, but if you just wanna get notifications.
I agree. I've been just getting a school board report in the past and I got that one.
Yeah, the this individual school reports, is that what you're doing, yeah.
From the, from the different buildings.
Yeah, we don't get them anymore.
That's wonderful.
Can you fix that?
I've gotten Don Darrow, but I don't student me the rest of them. I still get Don Darrow, but I don't know if I can get.
I can. Okay. George, you're.
George, yeah, I got it. I I knew at the beginning of the year we said to put you guys on everybody's list, so I'll have to see what.
Okay, Melissa, really. Okay, we have the future agenda items, if anybody sees any, I have world language, uh, committee driving map for the elementary schools. So, uh, if anybody else, if you know, still wanna add to that, let me know. Um, but I think we're all set.
We have. Did you, were you supposed to approve these policies that are on here today or?
You're not in here.
No, he has. Sorry.
So many, so, so, you know, we have so.
Oh, second is to.
Okay.